We will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will first start with instructions on Spanish interpretation.
Thank you, Mayor. The following message will repeat in Spanish. We are offering live interpretation in Spanish via our Zoom platform. To access our Spanish channel, press the interpretation button at the bottom of your screen, where you will see a globe icon, and choose Spanish. If you join via Zoom smartphone app, select your language by clicking more or the three dots at the bottom of your screen. Select Language Interpretation and choose Spanish. Bienvenidos. Estamos ofreciendo interpretación en español en vivo y en directo durante nuestra plataforma Zoom en esta sesión. Para tener acceso a interpretación, oprima el icono del globo terráqueo al pie de su pantalla y seleccione Spanish o español según su formato. Si está uniéndose vía Zoom en su teléfono inteligente, seleccione los tres puntitos al pie y a la derecha de su pantalla. Elija Interpretación de idiomas y pulse Spanish o español según su formato. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor. Back to you.
Great. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our land acknowledgement. The city of South Lake Tahoe acknowledges the lands we occupy today are the lands and home of the Washehshu, the people from here known today as the Washehoo Tribe of Nevada and California, a sovereign nation. Since the beginning of time and for thousands of years before the arrival of any other people, the Washehu lived here and cared for this place, with values and intention that we can all learn from. On behalf of the city council, I would like to acknowledge, thank, and honor the indigenous Washehoo tribal communities that are the past, present, and future stewards of the Lake Tahoe Basin. With that, we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
All right. With that, we'll move on to the roll call.
Councilmember Robbins?
Here.
Councilmember Wallace?
My microphone's not working, but I'm here.
Okay. Councilmember Kriegen?
Here.
Mayor Bass?
Here.
All right. With that, we'll move on to a closed session report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had two items on closed session this morning. The first was conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation initiation of litigation, and there is no reportable action. Second was conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, a workers' compensation appeal board case involving employee Cory Wilson, and there is no reportable action.
All right. Great. And with that, we will go ahead and move on to our proclamations. We're going to be starting with the Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month, and Ms. Stacy Ballard and Angie Reagan, I believe, are here. All right. So this is a suicide prevention and recovery month. Whereas the health and well-being of the citizens of South Lake Tahoe are of the utmost importance to the prosperity and quality of life in our community, and whereas suicide and other deaths of despair, which include deaths related to drug and alcohol abuse, are major public health issues that impact people of all ages, genders, and backgrounds, with devastating effects on families, friends, and entire communities. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is the tenth-leading cause of death in the United States, underscoring the critical need for comprehensive mental health care and proactive intervention. And whereas the observance of Suicide Prevention Month in September provides an opportunity to raise awareness, educate the public about suicide prevention, and promote mental health resources that can save lives. And whereas recovery from mental health and substance use disorders is possible with the appropriate support and treatment, helping individuals lead fulfilling and productive lives. And whereas Recovery Month is celebrated nationally in September to increase awareness and understanding of mental health and substance use disorders, and to celebrate those who have embarked on the journey of recovery. And whereas the city of South Lake Tahoe is committed to supporting initiatives that promote mental health, prevent suicide, and provide recovery resources to those in need. And whereas through collaborative efforts with healthcare providers, educators, community organizations, and concerned citizens, we can work together to foster a culture of understanding, compassion, and resilience. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of South Lake Tahoe does hereby proclaim September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Month and Recovery Month.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. My name is Angie Beacon. This is Simba. I'm grateful for Stacy and Raven, who are here with me today. I represent Peace Love Tahoe, Access Tahoe, and I volunteer for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Thank you for this important proclamation. Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month allows us to raise awareness, offer hope, and break the stigma around mental health, recovery, and suicide. This is an opportunity to request continued support for these critical causes, both through September and beyond. Deaths of despair are described as lives lost to suicide, drugs, alcohol, and alcoholic liver disease. According to public records, from January 2023 to July 2024, the Tahoe side of El Dorado County lost 10 lives to suicide and 15 lives to drug-related deaths, with others pending toxicology reports. The county does not keep records on alcohol-related deaths, but we have lost too many lives to despair in our community. These tragedies touch us all, leaving thousands grieving both within and beyond our community. I hope we use this month to increase awareness, training, and understanding around suicide prevention and recovery. We need less stigma and more compassion, empathy, and support for every life. Thank you to all who organized and attended the International Overdose Awareness Day at Bijou Park. And on this Thursday, September 12th, AFSP will present Talk Saves Lives at Cowork Tahoe from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., followed by an It's Okay to Feel the Blues fundraiser with blues music and Blue Dog Pizza. I hope you can join us. As someone who struggles openly with despair and chronic suicidal ideation, I heal out loud for the time I healed in silence, for those who still suffer in silence, and for those who are no longer with us. It's time to acknowledge the pain and despair so many endure and remind everyone that help is available and recovery is possible. At this moment, I ask for a moment of silence to honor those lives lost, those who continue to struggle, and the lives and the loved ones left behind. Let us also reflect on the strength of those in recovery and the importance of supporting them. Together, we can foster compassion, understanding, and hope for us all. And now, please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reagan.
With that, we will move on to our second proclamation, and this is going to be for honoring Constitution Week. And this will be Ms. Ginny Bechtel, the Regent Lake Tahoe Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Hello.
All right. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fulfilling and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, the city council of South Lake Tahoe in South Lake Tahoe, California, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
Okay. And I just want to thank the city of South Lake Tahoe for supporting the Daughters of the American Revolution and our Constitution Week. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and move on to public communications. This is the public's opportunity to speak on any topic not listed on this agenda. Comments shall be limited to four minutes. In accordance with the Brown Act, the city council cannot deliberate or vote on any matter raised under public communications, but may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed. So with that, we will go ahead and look for any public comment in the room. Go ahead and come forward and state your name for the record. Mr. Davis.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is J.T. Davis, and I'm the new PTA president for Tahoe Valley Elementary School this year. The Tahoe Valley Thunderbirds have a long and rich history in South Lake Tahoe. The school serves just over 400 students each year, and the school is dedicated to arts, music, and making education fun. Our school hosts multiple events each year, including a Harvest Fest, Santa's Breakfast, family movie night, dances, and an end-of-the-year performance and barbecue. In addition to these great events, our school is the proud home of our Teacher of the Year Ms. Alyssa Little, who teaches music. Our school offers our students with an ability to visit local landmarks, as well as Sutter's Fort in Sacramento and the Observatory in San Francisco, on various great appropriate field trips. These programs and field trips are made possible thanks to the generosity and awesome community and volunteers. My purpose for speaking today is to promote our annual Walk-a-Thon, which will be held on September 20th from 8:30 to 10:30 at Tahoe Valley Elementary. Our Walk-a-Thon is not only a way to get our kids excited to exercise, but is the school's largest fundraiser of the year, which helps to pay for the activities and field trips I've just listed above. In past years, then-mayors Tammy Wallace and Kristy Kriegen have participated in the event, and it was greatly appreciated by our staff and students to have the mayor at the event. I'm asking for the council and city staff to support our kids and help them reach their goals. If my daughter or any other student asks for a pledge for the Walk-a-Thon, please kindly donate and help these kids get the best experience Tahoe Valley has to offer. Thank you, council.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment? Mr. Kurtzweiler.
Good morning. Duties of the mayor. The mayor has been delegated the responsibility to control the debate and the order of the speakers, not the city manager, department heads, or other duly elected officials. I was planning on attending the upcoming 9/11 ceremony and presenting a shadow box that I had made. The shadow box used to hang on the wall here in the council chambers. It was removed and thrown into a back closet because someone felt it did not fit their idea of the motif of the remodel. It was then given to the city fire department for the year and is now with the Lake Valley Fire Department on a rotating basis. This was going back to the city fire department this year at the 9/11 ceremony. I have been informed by Commander Tom Milham, the current American Legion commander, that I cannot attend because of a rumor that I am in a motorcycle club. I retired 11 years ago. If I show up, I will be escorted off the property. I am not allowed to renew my membership nor attend any events, 9/11, Veterans Day, or Memorial Day, where I honor my son and daughter. My family has given quite a bit for this country and community. The sacrifices we have made are above and beyond anything we have ever imagined. There have been several times we have wanted to throw in the towel and start somewhere else. We have always decided to stay in our community where we have grown up. This is our last nail in the coffin for us. We have overcome quite a bit of adversity, more than most. This is the one final ugly straw. I do not believe our family can overcome this one. For 17 years, I was a guest speaker at the Reno Never Forget 9/11 Run. Three of those years, I was grand marshal over 10 years. I was a guest speaker at the American Legion Ceremony. This has been my talk since the beginning. Just as we have this freedom, a few have chosen to give us that freedom through military service. We also have the same freedom given to us by the over 2,977 American citizens who gave their lives and almost 10,000 injured on September 11th, which included 343 New York firefighters, 37 police officers of the Port Authority, and New Jersey, 23 New York police officers, eight EMT and paramedics, and one New York Fire Patrol. We also cannot forget the 64 brave men and women who fought the terrorists on the plane that hit the Pentagon that fateful day in September, killing another 125. We talk a lot about freedom, but what exactly is freedom without those that serve? Close your eyes so all you see is darkness. That is what freedom would look like without them. Cover your mouth so you cannot speak. That's what freedom would sound like without them. Cover your ears so you cannot hear. That's what freedom would sound like without them. Never forget that day in September, and never forget our fellow Americans. One of my favorite quotes is one that talks about the two defining forces that are willing to sacrifice themselves for us. I have always quoted two, but since September 11th, I believe I would like to add one more. Only three defining forces have ever offered to sacrifice their life for you: Jesus Christ, the American soldier, and America's first responders. All have died for your soul. All have died for your freedom. All are watching over us. Never, ever forget them. And I would like to take the rest of this time for a moment of silence for the lost lives on September 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtzweiler. Anybody else in the room that would like to go ahead and give a public comment? Go ahead and come forward. Mr. Messina.
Hi. I'm John Messina from the SouthTahotaxpayers.com. But this is not about politics. I was originally going to ask the city council who's going to move these new monstrous carts to and from the curb for seniors and disabled residents. Now, I believe the question is even more imperative after discovering the intrinsic dangers in moving these carts. Trash carts have been used in many Bay Area cities for years. However, they are designed differently and do not have the same safety issues. The difference is the STR carts have much larger lids and touch the ground if they're open when you move it. STR has produced volumes and volumes of paperwork about what we can put in them, but they have made not one word about the safety issue of the trip hazard that this creates. This is not a new problem. It's been known. There's been legal actions taken against some companies for the same problem. I did produce a little video to try and help explain what happens here.
Sorry, Mr. Messina. Let me pause your time a second.
Okay.
It is playing on one screen. Hold on a second.
Okay. I wish the people at home could see it.
Yeah, I know.
I know.
I'm working on that.
Okay. I will put it online so other people can see it that aren't here.
Unfortunately, it's not. I can't get it to show on that screen.
Any of them are... It started to play. I don't know what happened. Well... There it started. There it goes.
Yeah, it's not playing on the public screen. It's playing on mine.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
Maybe the city council can see it, I hope. There's... I'll narrate a little. There's no labels on it to tell anybody that there's a danger. And here's what happens. When you move the cart, the lid comes down on your foot, and your other foot is blocked by the lid, and you are propelled forward on top of the cart. Other lids are not that long. They don't hit the ground when you go to move the cart. Apparently, the company knew there was a problem inside the lid, a barely visible closed lid, before moving, but they don't have any warning about the trip hazard that it creates. So I hope we can get some word out to people before other people are injured. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Anybody else in the room? Yep. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Scott Lowberg? Sorry. I received this with my trash cans. It's a nice glossy brochure. Tells you all the stuff about the trash cans. The one thing it shows is recycling, all that. The one thing it doesn't show? Recycled paper on the back. This is like a campaign ad, advertisement. It does not say recycled paper. I don't know why we have a sustainability coordinator when environment is the number one priority there. Why we don't use recycled paper for this? I know it's not us, but it's our trash company that we procured. The other thing is, other areas, they use recycled trash cans made out of recycled plastic. And then, when the cans wear out, they recycle them and make cans again. These are not recycled cans. It's kind of a joke. I don't know why we have a sustainability coordinator. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Go ahead and please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, everybody. My name is Gary Waldis, and my wife is Karen.
Hi, everybody.
And we just learned about this meeting yesterday. My family's been up here since 1938, so we've been all the way around the lake, different properties. There's a couple... There's two major... Actually, this may be addressed later. The Midtown area plan. We just learned about this. I'm not sure...
How everything's working and how everything is going to be addressed, but that's what we're talking about. So should we make some comments right now, or should we wait?
Yeah, because that's on the agenda, so we'll have... Excuse me. We'll have a public comment on that item, so you'll be able to come back up for those comments. But if you have anything that you want to talk about not on the agenda, now is the time for that.
It's related to the agenda then. I guess we'll wait then. Okay? And we have not been to one of these, so can we expect...
Yeah, we'll call a public comment when we come to that item, and then you'll be able to come up and speak on that item.
Thank you.
Of course. Absolutely. All right. Anybody else in the room? Yes, Mr. Moser.
Good morning. Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Back in 1982, my mom was dying of cancer, and, you know, one of the things that allows is for get all your papers in order. You have weeks or months, most of the time. Everybody gets to pay your respects, and you get to fly out and see them three, four, or five times. Anyway, when she was in the end there, a few days before she did die in the hospital, and I went to see her, and she said, grabbed my hand and said, you know, "It's one thing I want you to know and one thing I want you to do for me." And I said, "Yeah, what's that?" And she said, "Well, how old are you now?" And I said, "31. I'll be 32 next month." And she said, "Okay." She said, "Well, promise me that by the time you're 35, if you haven't accomplished anything you intended or wanted to, promise me you'll go get your real estate license." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room? Yes, sir. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Eric Asbury, local resident here. Have a couple different topics here. Regarding the appointment for the remainder of John Friedrich's term, I just wanted to make it... Just make a mention that I think I feel that it would be an unfair advantage to allow someone running for city council to be appointed, you know, for a variety of reasons, like name recognition, that kind of stuff. As far as these three projects, the Sunray project, Heavenly with the parking in the winter, and the hole in the ground. In this time of division, I was thinking that the city could be an example of this, you know, government working with citizens and, you know, in this time that we're thinking about Measure N and private property rights, I feel like this would kind of go along a good way with government working with private homeowners. Sunray, for an example, would be work with them... Excuse me here. We could work with them and maybe motivate them to sell the property, because it is an eyesore. An idea I had is maybe we could waive all the fees that are occurring and give them like 12 months to sell the property. And so, I talked to the realtor that's selling that property, and he says that one of the biggest things is when someone goes and tries to buy it at fair market value, they have all these fees in addition to that that are added to that. And he thinks, and I agree with him, that it would sell if there was not those additional fees. Regarding Heavenly, I know that, you know, there's been some annexation, that kind of stuff. I have a limited amount of time, so I can't get too in-depth, but I was thinking we could work with them to achieve the appropriate parking for this winter as kind of a temporary. And I don't know, it was like $350,000, I think. We did the parking, maybe double the fee, so $700,000 for this winter. And it would be a temporary thing, of course. You know, I know the city wants to annex and stuff like that, you know, so for kind of a long-term goal. I was getting kind of worried when you guys were considering putting the barriers and then costing like half a million dollars for a temporary problem. And so, now we can go kind of in the opposite direction, where the city can actually get some funding and even double it, and I think Heavenly would do it if they were smart. So, and as far as the hole in the ground, I was at a fundraiser event for Keith Roberts, you know, Yes on Keith Roberts. I noticed there was... You know, I don't go there very often, but it was challenging... It is challenging with parking. And I know that we've been trying to work with out-of-town investors for a variety of reasons. Maybe we could work with them and say, "Hey, we can do this temporary parking area." And, you know, the city can be getting income, and then they could even be getting some income instead of just this hole in the ground. It would be a temporary thing, maybe, you know, cut off all the hazardous rebar and stuff. And I think for minimal amount, maybe the city could work with that owner on just a temporary thing to kind of help with the parking and to bring income and, you know, create that hole in the ground, doing something, at least making forward progress. I think we all agree that's probably going to have to be torn down. It's going to be a several-year project, this and that, but this is something that can kind of benefit the community. Let's see here. I just wanted to point out that 35... I found out recently, 35% of our city's population are seniors, and I feel that the vacancy tax/Measure N is a form of elder abuse. No on Measure N, yes on Keith Roberts, yes on David Jenkins. And then, we actually have a site up. It's called recallscott.com. Scott can give me his feedback if he wants to. You could sign up for free. All right. Thank you very much. Cancel.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on any topic not on today's agenda. There are no additional public comments, Mayor.
Great. Right. With that, we will go ahead and move on to city commission reports. Are there any commissioners here in the room? Not seeing any. So with that, we are going to go ahead and move on to our consent agenda, and looking to see if there are any council members that would like to pull any item from consent. Nope. All right. We're seeing none. We will go ahead and move to public comment on the consent agenda. Anybody in the room that would like to give a public comment? Yes, state your name for the record.
Scott Lowberg. I don't understand when there's such a substantial deficit that we're sending people on a junket to the city conferences down in Long Beach. It's over $700 a person. At least two are attending that. And who's going to be speaking? Somebody from Florida, from reality TV, Captain Sandy. That's ridiculous. What a waste of money. Where's the sustainability coordinator about the pollution? Are you flying down? Are you driving down? It's just ridiculous. Waste of money when we've got a deficit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Moser.
Yes, Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. I'd like to comment on two Ms. Blankenship, number 13 and number 17.
then costing like half a million dollars for a temporary problem. And so now we can go kind of in the opposite direction where the city can actually get some funding and even double it. And I think Heavenly would do it if they were smart. So, and as far as the hole in the ground, I was at a fundraiser event for Keith Roberts, you know, yes on Keith Roberts. I noticed there was, you know, I don't go there very often, but there was, it's challenging, it is challenging with parking. And I know that we've been trying to work with out-of-town investors for a variety of reasons. Maybe we could work with them and say, hey, we can do this temporary parking area. And, you know, the city can be getting income and then they could even be getting some income instead of just this hole in the ground. It would be a temporary thing, maybe, you know, cut off all the hazards, hazardous rebar and stuff. And I think for minimal amount, maybe the city could work with that owner on just a temporary thing to kind of help with the parking and to bring income and, you know, create that hole in the ground doing something, at least making forward progress. I think we all agree that's probably going to have to be torn down. It's going to be a several-year project, this and that. But this is something that can kind of benefit the community. Let's see here. I just wanted to point out that 35, I found out recently, 35% of our city's population are seniors. And I feel that the vacancy tax slash Measure N is a form of elder abuse. No on Measure N, yes on Keith Roberts, yes on David Jenkins. And then we actually have a site up, it's called recallscott.com. Scott can give me his feedback if he wants to. You could sign up for free. All right. Thank you very much. Cancel.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on any topic not on today's agenda. There are no additional public comments, Mayor.
Great. Right, with that, we will go ahead and move on to city commission reports. Are there any commissioners here in the room? Not seeing any. So with that, we are going to go ahead and move on to our consent agenda and looking to see if there are any council members that would like to pull any item from consent. Nope. All right. We'll see none, we will go ahead and move to public comment on the consent agenda. Anybody in the room that would like to give public comment? Yes, state your name for the record.
Scott Lowberg. I don't understand when there's such a substantial deficit that we're sending people on a junket to the city's conferences down in Long Beach. It's over $700 a person. At least two are attending that. And who's going to be speaking? Somebody from Florida, from reality TV, Captain Sandy. That's ridiculous. What a waste of money. Where's the sustainability coordinator about the pollution? Are you flying down? Are you driving down? It's just ridiculous, wasted money when we got a deficit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Moser.
Yes, Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. I'd like to comment on two, Ms. Blankenship, number 13 and number 17. Please.
Okay, go ahead.
Number 13 here is about restricted grant agreements with California Department of Transportation for South Lake Tahoe multimodal Main Street corridor plan. Yeah, this is, to me, this is a waste of money, but, you know, state's been doing that for a long time and you gladly accept it. You know, it says the attached resolution authorized city staff to negotiate, execute required agreements, accept the reward, accept the grant award and funding. We got six million, over $6 million grant for the transit center down there at State Line years ago. It was supposed to be a multimodal transit station. Never has evolved into that. You know, the League to Save Lake Tahoe kind of co-authored the grant request and put their name on it. Oh, we're going to have a gondola come down Highway 50 and was going to be able to turn right into there and be convenient and turn around right there and, yeah, pipe dream number one. And it says right here also under action item 1.4, prioritize alternative modes of transportation such as dedicated bus lanes, bike and pedestrian enhancements, and the citywide gondola. Here we go again, 2.0. You know, you can't even enforce the laws that ban e-scooters and e-bikes from the sidewalks, shared use paths. You know, we got a city attorney, police chief, incompetent CSO chief that doesn't enforce any of this. You know, that makes it quite dangerous for pedestrians. You know, you lose people coming here, you know, we have the same, we have, you know, lower class of people coming here every year because of the experience here. So, you know, traffic isn't just the only thing. You know, multimodal transportation, you're not going to have a gondola going down Highway 50. You know, start with smart streets. You know, I've said many times Sacramento has it, but a camera system on Highway 50, you can control it from the transit center, make it be used for something that it was intended for, not just underground parking for Marriott. And, you know, you can develop algorithms. So over time, you'll have very little manual control needed to control the lights and keep traffic moving. And also strengthen the road bed on Pioneer Trail to allow trucks, buses, trailers to use it so you avoid them going through light after light after light on Lake Tahoe Boulevard, which holds up traffic, adds to pollution on Lake Tahoe Boulevard and in the basin. Okay, move on to number 17. This is about the League of California Cities Annual Conference, sending our city attorney, Ms. Stroud and Mr. Robbins. God, I hope you don't have to sit together on a plane. But anyway, while you're there, Ms. Stroud, I've mentioned before, and of course hasn't been done, is talk to the league while you're there and to lobby the state legislature, get them to change the wording in the 1994 BID, Business Improvement District Amendment, which formed the TBIDs. Wasn't in 94, it was after that. You know, people got together and decided they could do that, where it says for marketing purposes, which technically does include infrastructure improvements, but of course here they claim it doesn't. So to allow it to specifically change the wording in that, to specifically allow funds to be used for physical infrastructure improvements, since it's a tourist business improvement district, to enhance the tourist district. Our tourist corps with a million dollars a year of the three to three and a half million collected could speed up the improvements needed by 10 to 15 years alone. Change the general, and number two, change the general law cities designation to allow them to raise the transfer tax that only charter cities are allowed to do without having to become a charter city. You only need a couple of sentences in there to allow that, so you don't have to go through the whole voting process and become a charter city. Just allow general law cities to only use, to raise the transfer tax and control that. The tax receipts and have it state that they can only be used for low to mid-income housing construction and rehabilitation. All the cities in the league should and would support this, I believe, because that's something that is needed and for two sentences, you can solve a great many problems. If the TBID can provide funding to the SSTMA for transit, which if you look at item number 18, which is the next one on the agenda, then they can provide funding to improve park avenues, state line avenues, and lakeshore Boulevard. And also for drainage projects on other streets in the tourist area, not only just in the tourist core area, but the TBID covers the whole town, the whole city they collect the money from. So you can do a lot of work and do a lot of improvements with that money and even just get, getting one-third of that money for physical and infrastructure improvements to make it a lot more nicer and a lot more feasible and a heck of a lot safer town to visit. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on any item on today's consent agenda. There are no additional public comments, Mayor.
Great. All right, we will bring it back to council for a motion.
That we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Great. With that, we can go ahead and vote.
Second.
Excuse me. All right, we got a motion in a second.
And I need to recuse on item 10, on the consent agenda, everything but item 10.
Great. All right, with the recusal.
Recuse on item 10, sorry.
On item 10, we will go ahead and vote.
That motion carries. Thank you.
Great. With that, we will go ahead and move on to regular unfinished business. This is item 18, the amendment number two to the funding agreement with the South Shore Transportation Management Association to extend term for one year at a total cost of 650,000. Ms. Roverood.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Bass, members of the council. I'm Hillary Roverood, Assistant City Manager. Can't hear me?
I turned it up. Go ahead.
Okay, there we go. The city has maintained a funding and service agreement with the South Shore Transportation Management Association, or SSTMA, since May of 2022 for SSTMA to provide microtransit services within the city. SSTMA has contracted with the South Tahoe Downtowner to operate the Lake Link system that provides this microtransit service and was formally launched in July of 2022. The agreement between the city and SSTMA has been amended several times. Most recently, that was in November of 2023, when the city council approved additional funding, a funding increase to $650,000 to facilitate the expansion of the Lake Link service area to the west and to add an additional hour of operation on Friday and Saturday nights so that Lake Link would operate until 11:00 PM. The Lake Link service continues to gain in popularity and the ridership numbers continue to increase. In July of 2023, 80%, I'm sorry, 89% of the over 18,000 rides that were provided by Lake Link were shared rides. These are multiple people taking the same vehicle to their destinations. The experience rating provided by riders for the Lake Link service has consistently been above a 4.8 out of 5. The current funding agreement between the city and SSTMA expires on September 30th, 2024, with an option to renew for one-year term upon mutual agreement. The recommendation before council today is to adopt an amendment to that agreement that would extend the term for another year until September 30th of 2025 and appropriate an additional $500,000 to go along with the 150,000 that was included in the council's adopted fiscal year 2425 budget, for a total of $650,000 in contribution for fiscal year 2425. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Roverood. Let's see, any questions from council? Seeing none, we will go ahead and open up a public comment on this item. Anybody in the room? Yes, Mr.?
Scott Lowberg. In the report, it was not mentioned what the cost per ride is. I'm just curious, out of $650,000, how much is it per ride average?
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Proctor.
Good morning, Mayor Bass and city council members. As chair of the SSTMA, I just wanted to say thank you for your support in the past. As Hillary said, we started this in July of '22. The idea was it was tied to the permit requirements for the event center. And we're very proud that we have expanded the service from that small zone to now four zones and hopefully continue to expand it. And your funds and the support you've given us over the years has been very helpful and allowed us to be quite successful. As Hillary mentioned, there's a lot of shared rides. We have, at last count, about 10% of those rides are to get to and from healthcare, up to 40% are to get to and from work. So what's interesting is something that was originally intended to be serving the event center and decreased vehicle miles traveled is now being used in our community for basic services. And transportation is something in the healthcare system we call a social determinant of health. If you have built infrastructure and transportation, people are going to be pretty much their best version of themselves because they can get the healthcare they need and they get the other services they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Anybody else in the room that would like to? Yes, Mr. Moser.
Just trying to get my 10,000 steps in. Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Yeah, as I've stated previously, actually from the onset of this, you know, it's a free taxi and limousine service. You know, it's not multimodal transit or it's not, you know, it's not a transit system. You really need to have fixed route, fixed routes, you know, have these as feeder routes or routes, depending where you were born and raised, and as they're used in, you know, many other cities and larger cities, because that's what you really, really need. You know, just a bus going down Highway 50 doesn't serve transit needs here at all or the one that goes through the College of 55. These should be used to have fixed routes that can feed either Highway 50 or get from one end of town to the other. You can serve a lot more people and a lot easier. And, you know, this, like I said, it's a free, it's a free taxi. You're not saving if people are getting out of their cars, saying they're getting out of their cars, then you're not saving VMTs. You're almost doubling it because they have to go from wherever their last stop was to go pick you up, bring you to where you're going to work or doctor's appointment or whatever and back. So if you're just using your own car, you would just go, come back. So you're almost doubling VMTs, number one. So that's, that's a joke and that's a big lie. If people don't have a car, then, you know, like I said, have fixed routes, you can serve more people, they don't have to wait, they know when it's coming roughly within maybe 10 minutes or so. They don't have to wait 40 minutes, 50 minutes for it. But also charge, you know, charge at least $3 for it. You know, if people don't have a car, well, that's, you know, gladly paid. It's a lot cheaper than having a car. And have their bosses, if they needed to get to work, have their bosses. Give them the, you know, the $3 each way, $6 a day to take it so they don't have to provide a place for them to park, you know, like at Heavenly Village. Like I said, you know, 40 something businesses and they don't have a single parking space there for customers or employees. You know, they use the garage that we paid for. So, you know, I would, I would suggest using, you know, increase it. Of course, you're going to have increased ridership. Anything's free, it increases, you know, give free food away, you know, over the meat during the COVID, giving away free beef. Yeah, that had more people show up each time. Also, as gentleman just said about, this was supposed to be originally serving the event center, and that's another lie. It's not. They park in front of my house and walk all the way over and in my neighborhood and stuff because they don't want to pay $40, $45 to park down at the casinos and stuff. So they're, they're not taking microtransit. You know, a few may be taking, you know, using e-scooters or something, but they're not really taking it. And there's no way you're going to, this is going to serve 6, 7,000 people going to the event center, which I said in the beginning, it was a joke anyway. It wasn't meant to, to serve as transit to get people to and from the event center. So I'm opposed to this. Do fixed routes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment on item 18? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to Zoom.
We'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on agenda item 18. There's no additional public comments, Mayor.
Great. So we'll bring it back to council for comments and/or a motion. Any council members have any comments? Seeing none, I do have just a quick comment. Last year when we had this item, we put in, I believe it in the motion, but maybe it's just on the record that if the TDA funds for California, which are Transit Development Act funds, were to move and be used for Lake Link, right now we have the JPA formation and some things happening, but we made a commitment that if that were to happen, we would commit an additional 200,000. And I just want to see if the appetite for council for that to still be in place as part of this, which would mean, again, we need to see the TDA funds move over, which to this time haven't happened, but hopefully it will, that we would still commit another 200,000 to this. So just want to see if council has the appetite. Ms. Wallace.
I do. I think it's a great idea. I think, going back to Mr. Moser's comments, that is exactly the plan, that this microtransit would be used to feed a upgraded, much better operating fixed route. And I think this is just first steps and we're trying to get there. And at our October 15th joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, we'll be making some final steps to form that JPA, hopefully. And we're, we're taking back over our community.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Ms. Krieger.
I agree with your comment about the additional 200,000. And I'm, I've been really proud of this council's leadership on this issue. I think that as Ms. Wallace just said, this is, this is a new, when this started in 2022, we weren't sure, but we were committed and I'm really proud of the way it's grown. I think it's grown exactly as we've wanted it to. So I'm really pleased with our commitment and would love to continue to go forward.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Krieger. Good to go, Mr. Robbins. All right, with that, we will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion authorizing and directing the mayor to execute amendment number two to the funding agreement with South Shore Transit Management Association to extend the term for one year and pass a resolution appropriating 500,000 from general fund, undesignated excess reserves in fiscal year 2425 to fund microtransit services through September 30, 2025.
I'll second.
Great. We got a motion in a second and we can vote.
That motion carries. Thank you.
Great. So with that, we will move on to item number 19. This is the Midtown Area Plan. I will be recusing on this item due to property ownership in the area. And with that, I will hand this to Ms. Wallace to take the meeting over.
Thank you, Mayor. This item will be brought forth by Ms. Kishuba.
Good morning, council members. I'm Anna Kishuba. I'm a senior planner here for the city of South Lake Tahoe. I'm here today to discuss priorities for the Midtown Area Plan that will inform staff and consultants as we move forward with our outreach efforts. The staff report includes some examples that have been identified by staff based on some of our recent planning endeavors, including our recent area plans as well as the housing, housing element from a few years ago, as well as the 56-acre master plan. I want to be clear that the plan will cover a variety of topics, so it will touch on all of the items listed, but we're just here today kind of looking for some more, just any topics that aren't included based on the staff analysis that council would like us to explore or any of the topics that are here that we should maybe dedicate additional efforts to. So a brief summary of the items discussed in the staff report include redevelopment incentives. So I'd be exploring city and state incentives that we can use to spur redevelopment. A lot of, a big component of this would be encouraging mixed-use developments with the residential component. Residential, I think there's just about eight to 10 residential parcels within this area plan. And I think in order to have kind of a true town center with walkability and just that kind of atmosphere, we do need the residential density to support the existing commercial uses. Another item is the arts district. This is identified by the strategic plan as a priority for the area plan. This could be a geographic area within the plan that's dedicated to art. Maybe that's a walkthrough exhibit somewhere in the 56-acre master plan or looking for ways to encourage private developers to incorporate art into their spaces. Transportation could be another priority. Transportation could be another priority as far as identifying, um, priority routes. We really want to focus on what trails will be the most utilized because these are quite expensive projects. Something to note about the area plan, it contains a lot of locations frequented by children and our youth, such as the rec center, both the existing and the under-construction rec center, the middle school, Bijou Park, and the community college with the playing fields located there. This kind of ties into the redevelopment incentive, incentives I discussed, um, with the first point, but housing, we anticipate hearing similar comments than we did with the Tahoe Valley and tourist core area plans, um, regarding the need for more housing in town centers with additional density. So I think this will, um, definitely be a priority and again ties back to those redevelopment incentives and how we can get residential units within this plan. A civic center was a large focus of the fifty-six acre master plan that was spurred by the, by the development of the new rec center. So the concept was to concentrate city services within that site. And this has the potential to increase efficiency of city operations, better facilitate public participation at city council and commission meetings and just to create a more vibrant community gathering space. And last, I think it, you know, goes without saying that recreation is key to this area. We have Lake View Commons, we have the Bijou Park and golf course, as well as the, um, playing fields around the college and boys and girls club and elementary or middle school. Um, so just taking a deeper look into the accessibility of those sites and how those can be expanded to meet the community's needs in upcoming years. I just want to, again, emphasize that for area plans, these are long-term plans. We're recreating a twenty-year vision, so it's kind of about identifying what we need now, but of course anticipating what the community will need in that, um, you know, ten to twenty years that these plans stay in place. So what we're looking for, for this conversation is just a high-level comments regarding these components I listed and if there's anything that wasn't covered that council would like us to include and prioritize that can better inform staff as we frame and approach these prop, these topics for our community meetings. The second part of this item is just a, um, summary of some of the outreach efforts that we have begun and that are planned. So the staff report includes some of those focus groups we'll be hosting and participants. These are, of course, always in flex. If we get requests for certain groups to attend, we will invite them. Um, on the other hand, um, you know, invites have been sent that we don't hear back from. And I just wanted to take the top opportunity as well to share some upcoming events where the public can participate in this process. This Friday, I'll be at the Lake Tahoe Community College for their fall orientation to speak with students about their vision and goals for this area. This Saturday, the fourteenth, I'll be at the multicultural celebration at Bijou Park. Be having a public open house on September twenty-fifth at the Senior Center. So it'll be just a general meeting for people to stop by, learn about an area plan, what goes into that, um, as well as start to receive some of that feedback. And then on October second, another open house at the Family Resource Center. This will be, um, targeted towards our Spanish-speaking community. All the materials and presentation will be done in Spanish. Um, that's everything on the calendar for now, but there will be additional meetings throughout October and November. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions or open it up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kishuba. Council, do you have any questions? Mr. Robbins?
Yeah. Um, there's some questions about some of the parcels that are here now and how they're zoned. So the one item that's come up for, in public discussion a lot is the, uh, some of the shopping centers that are currently underutilized, um, you know, particularly the, um, the shopping center on Al Tahoe Boulevard, uh, and fifty. What is that parcel currently zoned for right now?
That is, um, you're talking at the intersection of Al Tahoe and Lake Tahoe Boulevard, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So that is zoned for commercial uses. Um, the way our permissible uses work, it's, um, you know, there's the broad category of commercial uses. Within that, the permissible use matrix lines out the kind of specific uses that are allowed within there. So while it may be commercial, we can allow eating and drinking there, general retail, but maybe not, um, small-scale manufacturing. So there's kind of layers to that, but it is currently commercial.
Would it be, is it currently legal to say, redevelop that into, currently, under the current, um, zoning for that area? Is it, would it be legal to build like a mixed-use residential and commercial air, uh, buildings?
At this point in time, under the Bijou-Al Tahoe Community Plan, residential is not an allowed use there.
Okay. All right. Um, and then that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties.
Um, Ms. Kriegen, no questions? Thank you so much, Ms. Kishuba. We'll go to public comment now. Is there anyone in the room that would like to, Mr. Tashara?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Wallace and members of the council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, Steve Tashara on behalf of Tahoe Chamber. This is a huge opportunity for the city, a significant opportunity to do some things in a part of the city that is really dated, um, and to solve some of the issues that we struggle with constantly, including housing and economic and community revitalization. Um, I appreciate the, the staff's characterization of which, uh, organizations fall under which priorities. We at the Chamber would be interested in the full scope of all the issues, and so we look forward to participating and again thank the city and the staff for your leadership on moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tashara. Is there anyone else in the room that would like make public comment?
This is the time.
Gary, my name is Gary.
Just so we're aware, I'm sorry, I don't start their time just yet. In public comment, you get four minutes, but now you get three. I just wanted to, but we'll go back to the beginning because I interrupted you.
Okay, thanks. My name is Gary Wildison. My wife Karen. Um, I'm, I have to apologize because we just got back up here from, uh, San Diego and we're moving back up here and we heard about this meeting, so, um, I'm not sure, we haven't looked at the, the Midtown Plan at all, but I wanted to comment on what we'd like to have happen there.
And what we know, we, uh, lived here for twenty years before. Um, we have children that went to schools here in the area, et cetera, so we are familiar with the area. And like Gary said before, his family's been here since nineteen thirty-eight, all around the lake. And I think one thing that's really important to us is community. Um, we have found that, um, South Lake Tahoe doesn't allow that for their residents at all. It becomes, it's, it's become a strip and it, we need some kind of a community so that everyone can meet and be together and have a town rather than a strip where you have to get in your car to go from one end to the other. And I believe, and we haven't looked at it, as Gary has said, that we would really like this to have a, have a center for everybody. Um, you know, at one time when we were living here in the seventies, um, there was oppose, proposed idea for it to be something at State Line and then something at the Y, two towns. But I think that that's not working at all. We need to create one. So go ahead, Gary.
Yeah. And so we, we'd like to see happen, it would be a public square in a town around that in this area. And the, the second thing is that, um, there's no place for public access to the lake from, you know, forever, really. And one of the things you could do there is you could move Highway fifty back in.
In the Bijou area.
Create a park and, on the lake, so people could access the water there.
With the town around that, you know, a little bit to, to create that, uh, environment there would be really, uh, positive for South Lake Tahoe. Um, we, we need to be able to go to little stores and little things that you could put around there with our children and our families and meet everyone and say hello to your neighbors. You don't right now. You go to the post office, you go over there, you go over there to go to this shop, and you go over there to go over the hill to go to Nevada, to go to Costco, you know, but where is our town? It's not, you know, you, you, you meet at your homes, but you don't meet as communities unless it's a dinner here or there. And then it's not, like, different churches, like in, 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 uh, different places. You're close to each other. You're not, you're not here.
There's enough public land there that you could, you could create something there. The last thing I'd like to comment on is be the, the college. If we turn that into a four-year college, it would really change the economics in the town and, and that would be really positive.
What specific, um, degrees that would be, um, helpful to our Lake Tahoe area? The lake, the mountains, you know, those types of things? So, anyway.
Thanks.
There you go.
Thank you very much for your comments. I encourage you to attend some of the stakeholder meetings. You have great ideas.
Yeah. So we would love to be involved. Whoever we talk to, let us know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to make public comment on the Midtown Area Plan? Okay, we'll go to our Zoom platform. Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who would like to provide public comment on Agenda Item Nineteen. No additional public comments. Okay, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Mr. Robbins?
Um, just a question for staff. So, um, on page, uh, four and five of the report, um, you talked about some of the, uh, participants that the staff is anticipating to reach out to and coordinate with. Um, among them are included Barton Hospital and, um, El Dorado, uh, sorry, uh, Lake Tahoe Unified School District. With Barton Hospital, I assume you're referring to, like, Barton Hospital Management. And with LTUSD, I assume you're also referring to LTUSD Management. Is there any interest, uh, or is there any potential for the city, uh, staff to additionally reach out to the teachers' union and to the nurses' union as well? I think it'd be good to get input from, um, some of the workforce, uh, representatives, uh, in addition to, uh, management representatives, uh, because, uh, housing is a major issue for, uh, the workforce of nurses and the workforce of teachers. And those are our two sort of larger union groups, um, in, in the community. The carpenters' union might also be a good one to add as well to reach out and discuss, uh, with, uh, with, with, you know, representatives from, uh, the labor sector as well.
Thank you. Yeah, um, generally when those groups are mentioned, it is management or the kind of long-range, um, planning groups for those. A lot of the area plans, um, deal with the built environment, so design standards. We want to know if they have any, you know, plans to expand, for example, um, the college, if there are any new, with the residential project, some of the policies that will go into this plan were spurred by needing to address that project. So that's generally why we reach out to those groups, but I'd be more than happy to reach out to these unions and include them.
Okay. So is that, uh, does that need a, does that need?
No, we will definitely make sure we extend an invitation to any unions that may have an interest.
Okay. So that'd be the.
It's all understood.
At least inclusive of the teachers' union, the nurses' union, and the carpenters' union?
That's fine. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kriegen, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm super com, thank you very much for your report. I'm super comfortable with these priorities. This is exactly what we've talked about before, and I specifically like your use of the word vibrant because I really do think that that's what we're going for with the mixed-use nature of this neighborhood. So thanks.
I agree. I'm excited for this plan because there is, um, as was stated by public commentators, this is an area that is ideal, I think, for that community part of, you know, the Y is a business area, the State Line area is a tourist and business area, and this can be a community area. And especially with the, the fifty-six acre master plan and, you know, potential future city hall there, I think that this is just the first step. And there's so many difficult parts to bring together, so this is an exciting program. I don't have anything to question, um, or to add. I think that all of you, you've done a good job identifying the stakeholders in this. And I think that Mr. Robbins is accurate. We need to involve some of the, the, um, line workers, for lack of a better word. So, um, if there's nothing else.
One more.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to clarify because I, I think you covered it. I just want to make sure my understanding is correct. Is it correct that the intention here is that the entire area plan will include, uh, will move towards allowing mixed-use development? So, for example, being able to allow, uh, mixed-use residential and commercial and business, uh, combined uses or any, any element of that, be it, you know, a residential or commercial or mixed, uh, in the areas within the area plan? Particularly, you know, I'm thinking about the shopping center, the, um, the Sierra Tahoe Commercial Strip area. We want to make, you know, I want to make sure that the current intended pan, uh, plan is for fairly high-density, mixed-use residential within the entire area plan. Uh, and then just make sure, it sounded like that was what the intention was because you mentioned housing a few times. I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
Yeah, I'd say that's definitely the overall direction. There are some exceptions, being, that being the recreation uses, so Bijou Golf Course and Meadow and the community park. I don't say that we allow any commercial or residential there. Um, but overall, yes, I'd say the goal is to allow more mixed use with that residential component. That will be through making the uses, um, just outright allowed, as mentioned earlier with that. Al Tahoe development at the corner of Al Tahoe and Lake Tahoe Boulevard, um, residential isn't allowed there right now, so we'd be looking at making that an allowed use. And then in the other areas, moving it from a special use to an allowed use. Some other things that are just kind of in alignment with housing and, uh, moving those projects forward would be just more streamlined development standards, um, streamlined application process, just to make sure those projects can, um, just move through the process quicker.
Now, the development that's going in or that's planned for the former Lilly's Tires site, uh, that was supposed to be a, um, residential development, that was going to be more units than what is actually currently planned, right? Because at the, as I recall, because it didn't, uh, the current area plan didn't allow for sufficient density. And will this update? We want to make sure that, you know, those kinds of projects are within higher density, uh, for, for this area.
Absolutely. What limited the density in that specific project was that, that is not in an area plan, it's just in a plan area statement.
Right.
So the way TRPA has the density standard, how that works out for plan area statements is that they kind of prorate the amount of commercial floor area, um, and the bigger that is, the fewer residential units you can do. With the area plan in place, we can have, um, that commercial component can be built to the maximum allowed for that parcel size, as well as that residential component can both go to the maximum as laid out by the area plan.
What, what limits, practically speaking, the amount of density we can have in this commercial, in the, you know, fronting Highway fifty here, for example? Uh, in terms of, you know, we can decide what we want, but what ultimately limits that?
That would be a factor of the, um, community involvement, what they feel is our appropriate densities. Of course, city council, TRPA has to approve this, so if it's beyond what they're comfortable with or beyond what their environmental analysis would show, um, is sustainable and appropriate, that would be another limiting factor. Um, then in line with that kind of environmental analysis would be the SEQA analysis.
Okay. So ultimately, it'll be SEQA slash the TRPA will, you know, we can move forward to as high density as we want, but ultimately those are the limiting, those, those are the external limiting factors?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's accurate.
So that, very good. So I just want to make sure that we're sort of pushing for as high-density residential as, as, as possible and as mixed use in the area. So that sounds very good. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I move that we confirm the priority topics to be addressed in the Midtown Area Plan as implementation of redevelopment strategies and incentives, creation of arts district, transportation improvements, encouraging housing development, concentration of city services and civic amenities, and enhancement of recreation assets.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing that, we can vote and I will have to vote.
Uh, I will record you as a yes?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay. And we are going to take a short break. Uh, we'll come back at ten twenty, if we can get my computer fixed.[1692.13]
That motion carries.
Okay, and we are going to take a short break. We'll come back at 10:20 if we can get my computer fixed.
So item number twenty, uh, this is gonna be a presentation by the California Department of Transportation on hot mix asphalt concrete and Portland cement contract for roadway rehabilitation on state highways. And this will be Mr. Najad.
Good morning, Mayor Bass. I'm members of the city council. For the record, my name is Anoush Najad, Director of Public Works. On March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the council directed staff to arrange a presentation from the California Department of Transportation regarding pavement options for state routes in the city of South Lake Tahoe. City staff contacted Caltrans District three director and the executive staff to arrange for this presentation, and Caltrans graciously accepted our request. The presentation covered two different paving options: a hot mix asphalt, which is called flexible pavement, which is primarily used here in South Lake Tahoe, and Portland cement concrete, which is primarily used for high-traffic-volume roadways. Today, we have three representatives from Caltrans who are here to make this presentation and to answer your questions. Clark Perry is the Chief of Office Program Project Asset Management with District Three. Also, we have Shawna Thomas, District Three Asset Manager. And finally, we have Manjot Gill, District Three Pavement Program Advisor, who will lead this presentation. Ms. Gill received her Bachelor's of Science degree in civil engineering in two thousand and twelve and started her engineering career as an Assistant Civil Engineer for a land development company. She started working for Caltrans in two thousand and fifteen, beginning in advanced planning, developing project initiation documents, and then moved to roadway design for two years. She then moved to District Three Asset Management, where she has spent the last six years, including being the District Three Pavement Program Advisor, for the last five years. This presentation is a receive-and-file item, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. I now turn over this presentation to Ms. Gill. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Manjot Gill, and I'm gonna go through our presentation, yeah, going a little bit over asphalt and concrete and how Caltrans determines what to place where. Um, let's start off by talking about the basics of pavement. Basic pavement layers that we have for our pavement, ours at the top, the black surface, that you could be flexible or rigid, that's our surface course. And then right underneath is the base, and then, um, which is the black dots. And then right underneath is the subbase. All of our pavements are made of these three pavement layers. So whether it's asphalt or concrete, we always have the three basic layers. And then let's go over the types of shop projects that, um, pavement projects that we do. Basically, majority of our work is dictated by the shop pavement program, which funds all of our projects. Uh, the shop program is, stands for the State Highway Operations and Protection Program. We are a fix-it-first, so we fix what is existing majority of the time. Um, the basic that we do in field maintenance and in our maintenance design is pavement preservation. Payment preservation is preserving the existing, so let's say you have potholes or you have minor damage in the surface course, that is done through payment preservation through our HM program, okay? And then we have also the layer up from there is a capital maintenance program, which would be the, um, a designed product that we, uh, do plans and estimate for, that contractor goes out there and, um, kind of rebuilds the surface course for us. And then that usually happens on a pavement that has a remaining fifteen-to-twenty-year life still, so that it's still good pavement, but we just need to do some retouching on it. And then the next step up there, uh, from there is roadway rehabilitation. That means that the da- uh, the pavement is damaged, it could be damaged, uh, in the surface course or in the base. So, um, it could go deep depending on what kind of damages out there. Those are the, our two R, which is resurfacing and restoration projects, or our three R, which is resurfacing, restoration, and rehabilitation projects. And then we also have reconstruction that would require the full reconstruction to the depth, to the subbase of the pavement. That means that the pavement is exhibiting serious damage that needs to be addressed. And then we also do widening, which, uh, might be done to improve traffic flow, accommodate transit, bicycles, shoulders, or, uh, turnouts or pullouts. We also do, uh, new construction for, let's say, new roadways. Let's say we need to realign or a realignment, uh, a new interchange, bypasses, grades, or separation crossing. Those are the type of pavement projects that we do. And then the types of pavement that we mostly work with in Caltrans, there's, uh, three types of pavement. One is rigid, which is concrete, so the complete design is concrete, you have a base, subbase, and then the surface course is concrete. Then you have flexible, which is asphalt, which is our black surface out there. Um, same thing, we have a base, subbase, and then you have flexible pavement on top. And then we also do composite. Composite would be either asphalt on top of concrete pavement or concrete on top of asphalt pavement, depending on what the situation is out there. And then we have, also have pavement selection criteria. Now, depending on what the pavement, existing pavement needs, we have selection criteria on what kind of treatment we need to do out there. Um, one of the major ones is, uh, pavement design life. How many years are we trying to get out of the existing pavement that's out there, and how much design life is left in the existing pavement out there? We also have traffic consideration. What type of traffic goes through here, and how much traffic goes there? Is it mostly recreational, or is it, uh, fright movement? What, what type of traffic, um, uses this corridor? And then we also have soils characteristics. What type of soil is underneath the pavement, and what kind of bases and subbases do we need to prepare in order for our asphalt or pavement, uh, concrete pavements to last? Um, the biggest issue that we have out here is climate. Um, freeze thaw. Freeze thaw is our biggest, uh, issue out here, and most of it is runoff, right? We have a lot of snow, snow melts, and we have a lot of ponding, and this water, when it stands there, creates a lot of damage to the existing pavement. So those are the kind of things that we look at when we're designing pavement. Um, also the existing pavement and the condition, type and condition. What kind of condition is it in? How long did it last when we originally did it? And what kind of, um, damages are showing? Is it just surface damage, or is it, um, de- in-depth damage? Also, existing drainage, what kind of drainage that do we have out there? Or the availability of materials? What kind of materials are available locally, or do we have to transport it? Um, also recycling, are we trying to recycle the existing pavement out there, or do we have a recycling branch nearby that we might be able to use? Things like that. And also the biggest one, maintainability. Can we maintain the pavement that we put out there? Is it, uh, cause if we can't maintain it, there's no reason for us to put it out there, because it's just gonna create issues for the drivers along with us. Uh, constructability, are we able to construct what we have designed? That is a huge issue out there. And then also, we look into the lifecycle cost analysis. How long do we accept, expect these pavements to last, and how long are they lasting? There's also a lifecycle assessment in terms of, um, what kind of a, uh, maintenance or rehabilitation does, is it, are these pavements gonna go through when we put them out there? Um, I think your biggest concerns or issues is looking at the difference between concrete and asphalt. What are the advantages of concrete? Concrete is definitely a durable material. It is, um, designed for high-volume, high-traffic areas with, uh, mostly high-fright. So you have a lot of weight out there, those, that's where you wanna put concrete, because it's a durable material out there. It's also less prone to rutting. Rutting is basically where, uh, the tires, uh, damage, the tires, uh, the three foot, and you'll see, like, it will go into a, like a shoveling issue. And then, concrete doesn't do that a lot. However, what you do have to realize is concrete still experiences chain wear damage. So if you have chains running on it, it will still damage the surface course and the concrete out there. So that is still unavoidable in high elevation areas. Um, concrete also has fewer repairs. So if you have concrete out there, you expect to do less repairs out there, and it does last longer. Um, the advantages of asphalt is, it's less expensive to install. We can install, eh, about one-point-five million dollars per lane mile. And then it's also less roi- uh, road noise, it's quieter pavement, it has better traction and skid resistance. So, um, it also has, um, black asphalt utilizes heat, so it will warms up faster. So if you have a lot of, uh, snow out there, it will tend to melt, melt a lot faster on black asphalt versus concrete. Um, there's also ease of maintenance and repair. Uh, black asphalt is easier to repair than concrete is. And then it is also cheaper to maintain. It, it's estimated about hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars per lane mile per year to maintain. Concrete pavement is a little bit expensive to install, it's about two-point-five million dollars per lane mile to install. It is also expensive to maintain, it costs about hundred-and-fifty-four thousand per lane mile per year to maintain. And then, it's also more road noise compared to asphalt pavement, it's a little bit louder. Uh, there is also, um, costly and difficult repairs to the concrete pavement. It is also smooth on slippery roadways. So if you have a lot of snow and you have a lot of water, it does tend to be a slippery roadway. Um, it is also more prone to cracking and breaking. Um, concrete cracks, asphalt cracks less than concrete. Um, asphalt pavement is, uh, prone to rutting. So you're gonna have, you're gonna see the ta- uh, damage due to, uh, tires, um, is gonna be more prevalent on asphalt versus concrete. And then asphalt also has a lower life expectancy than pavement, uh, than concrete. Now, that I'm gonna say with a caveat, because now we are able to design asphalt pavement with a forty-year design along with concrete pavement. So there are comparable to that. And then also, there is a lot of significant, um, stage construction and handling issues with concrete pavement. So, eh, it requires a lot of dry time, so a lot longer road closures. And then I think the biggest question was, why does Caltrans use, um, asphalt pavement in, uh, South Lake Tahoe? Uh, the biggest thing is ease of maintenance and pavement repair. Our maintenance guys are able to go out there and repair it quick and fast, and they have the skills and capabilities to do that versus concrete pavement. Concrete pavement takes a little bit longer to wear, concrete has to cure, um, it causes a lot of closures, um, there's a lot of issues with that. And then also, um, asphalt is better traction and skid resistance. So if you have a lot of stop-and-go traffic, you want asphalt out there, because it gives you that resistance that you need for that breaking. Any other questions that I may be ca- able to answer for?
What are the criterion that are assessed when, uh, considering whether or not to make a change between a road that is currently surfaced in asphalt to concrete? What, what formula is currently used to, uh, evaluate whether or not there's something should be upgraded or changed?
Okay, so one of the things that, uh, first is, all, all of our Caltrans pavement goes through a automated pavement condition survey every two years. That is data collected on the pavement to determine what kind of failures or what kind of issues we're seeing out there. So base failures, or, uh, whether it's just surface cracking, or anything like that. That data is available to us every two years. Um, in order for any of these projects to happen, let, whether it be a pavement preservation, reconstruction, widening, or whatever, it has to qualify. So there is data that needs to back up your decision to do whether you're gonna do a capital maintenance project, or whether you're gonna do a HM project, or whether you're gonna do a roadway rehabilitation project. That data that we collect would be used to justify and qualify for these types of projects. Um, so that is the, the first stand, in order for you to, uh, create a project out there, you have to show that there's existing damage, or the data has to show that there's existing damage that requires one of these projects, or, uh, to go out there and address that damage. Once that is done, um, the only time that you would be able to, um, let's say, replace asphalt with concrete or concrete with asphalt, if there's existing out there, it would have to be done under a reconstruction, a roadway rehabilitation or reconstruction. Uh, in order for that to happen, you, number one, have to qualify for that, um, program due to the type of damage that we're seeing out there. And then once that is determined, we have a program called the CalME program that takes into account our, uh, traffic patterns in terms of what the ADT is out there, what kind of a design life you're looking to get out of the pavement. And that program does not, uh, pick or choose asphalt or concrete. That is a blanket program where you input, um, your, your inputs are gonna be your design life, what kind of a, um, traffic you have out there, what kind of soils you have out there. So your basic, and you load that into it, and that program will tell you what your comparable, um, pavement structural section should be, whether it be asphalt or concrete. So if it qualifies, if your existing, um, characteristics qualify for concrete pavement, it will give you that option for, it needs a concrete design, or you need to study a concrete design. When that happens, and that comes up, we also do a, a payment lifecycle cost analysis. So we go through, and we have to conduct a pavement lifecycle cost analysis comparing the asphalt to the concrete pavement to determine what is a better, um, way to spend our money, or what, what we're gonna get the best for our money, um, in terms of that design. And then also, last but not least, but most importantly, is the engineering judgment, right? We've been out here, we've had the same pavements, we look out here, we look to see, ho- number one, wh- how long are these pavements lasting that we put in out there? So if we put in asphalt, is asphalt lasting? How long is it lasting? Are we getting our money's worth, or is it falling apart sooner than expected? And number two, what kind of issues that we have out there? We don't wanna create issues that, um, weren't existing before. Let's say in town, you wanna wanna put in concrete pavement and make it slippery and have, create accident issues out there. So that's where your engineering judgment comes in. So it actually goes through three to four rounds of, um, comparison before we come up with a final design for the pavement.
And where is Highway fifty relative to those, uh, evaluation standards?
Um, when you ask that question, you mean, um, whether it would qualify for those?
Correct. Where is it relative to the, to the standards of qualifying for the initial entry into evaluation for that, that determination?
Okay. So when we do our, uh, Highway fifty is a long stretch of roadway. So when you say Highway fifty, I'm gonna assume the in-town portion.
I, I am, and it's, and it's the, it's the part in town that is really beat to shit. It's just, it's, it gets beat up every year, and, frankly, the, the section between, uh, where I live on near Keys Boulevard and the Y intersection, that was paved two years ago, it's already torn up, right? That, that's, that's less than two years we got out of that pavement before the chains and the plows and the traffic, you know, and the freeze thaw tore it to pieces. And so at some point, I gotta ask, you know, how often do we keep needing to be behind on repairs with the, with the asphalt before it goes into an evaluation process? I understand there's a formula for all these things that you're describing, so where is, you know, it, where is this section of Highway fifty relative to that formula? Particularly, you know, the, the area, the, the rest of Highway fifty, the, the area by the Y was just, was paved recently and is already in bad shape. The area towards the midtown area and state line is in bad shape already, and that, that wasn't, you know, that, we're, we're gonna keep patching this up over and over again, so.
So what, uh, you have to understand is, um, we have, Caltrans is fiscally constrained, right?
Sure.
We, we are all fiscally constrained.
Sure.
We have pavement management strategies. Um, when we analyze, when we propose a project, so there's a project coming out right now that's gonna be in construction, uh, through the area that you're talking about, it is a capital maintenance project, right? Um, when that project went out, we did analysis to see what kind of damage that was, um, existent out there, but one, and what kind of, um, traffic flow we would be looking for the future, and how that would impact our design. Uh, when we looked at it, um, and even now when we drive it, and the data that we've looked at in the past couple of years as well, there is not a lot of base failure out there. The most of the issues that you're seeing out there is in the surface course. It's in the top layers, and that is due to the freeze thaw that we get, because po- water ponds on there, and then it freezes when it gets cold, and then it, 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 it is what's, uh, causing it, and it's mostly the joints that are the issues out there. It's the pavement joints that start to go, and then it just goes from there. Um, we are aware of that, but that is one of the issues that, um, is going to be unavoidable even with concrete pavement. If you put concrete pavement out there, the water's still gonna get through the joint, it's still gonna cause that type of damage. The issue with the concrete pavement is also, is our, our field maintenance is not as well-trained, or do not have the capacity to do concrete pavement repairs like they do asphalt pavement repairs, cause asphalt pavement repair can be done a lot faster. The majority of the pavement repairs that our field crews can do for concrete is spa repair and seal, joint seals. That is the capacity, their capacity. Anything above that would have to be, um, in a shop program. Um, so that's why we have asphalt out there, because they can do pothole repairs, they can do crack seals, they can do a seal to, uh, seal off so that water doesn't penetrate. They can do, they have the capacity to do that. And the reason that the, two, uh, we've only got two years out of that project is when we put in that project, this was, uh, we knew that we would be coming, this project was already in the, um, hopper, as you would say. This project was already in the hopper when that project went out there. So we knew that we would be coming back to do that, this project, to address the pavement. So we, it's not that these, um, damages were unexpected, they're surface course damages that we had expected, and we had already had a project out there to address these damages, to get out there and do that. The only thing that happened is the last two years, we got severe snowstorms and severe rain that nobody could have predicted. Nobody could have predicted that we were gonna have a, uh, snow levels that we got, or that the rain, raining season was gonna be so long. And that kind of, um, I guess, advanced the pavement design, uh, the payment deterioration before we could get out there. But we are only out there, uh, we're one year away from the pavement damage that you guys are seeing. So it's not a huge gap in terms of the, that, that pavement hasn't been addressed. As you can see, we are continually monitoring the pavement, we are, we have, um, continued pavement management, management strategies. But if you say, if this area's gonna qual- when is the, this area gonna qualify for rehabilitation, if that is your question, um, that is gonna be when the pavement starts showing that it is, uh, beyond its capacity, when it starts to show that it's getting base failures. So it's all depends on what kind of failure we're seeing out there.
I mean, it, it just seems that we're, that the life duration that we're getting out of the pavement isn't, isn't what we ought to be seeing from, from the asphalt. I understand we're in, we're in a difficult climate condition, but, you know, i- it seems that, you know, we should be getting more years out of the pavement than, you know, two years before stuff starts falling apart again. And if, if concrete isn't the solution, then I guess the question is, is there a solution that gets us something closer to, you know, a few, more than a couple of years out of, out of, out of the roadways that we're getting now? Cause it's, this is a problem for our residents, for our businesses, for our, for our constituents, trans, uh, suspension systems that get banged up like this, so.
That is true.
It seems like there shouldn't have to be a situation where the, the pavement deteriorates so quickly. We're, we're not the only community in the snow.
No, you're not the only community in the snow, and we have these issues, uh, all, all of our other communities. Um, we are always analyzing our pavements, analyzing, like, field maintenance. If field maintenance have issues, or the issues that you guys have brought up, they were automatically brought up to our attention, and we have taken measures to address those issues as, as, in a timely manner as possible. Um, in terms of getting a longer design life, it, like I said, it's a pavement management strategy in terms of what are you trying to get out, get out here. Um, rehabilitation, I'm gonna say, it's gonna be a loo- a little while before this, cause the pavement, we're currently is in good condition. The only issue is the surface course, and you're gonna have those issues no matter what, because we run chains on, uh, until we stop running chains or snow tires on here. We're gonna keep getting these issues, and we're gonna, it's, it's unavoidable. Until we come up with a more innovative strategy to address these issues, it's just a pavement management, uh, cycle that we're gonna have to go through.
All right, any other questions? Um, great. I have, uh, just a couple. I'm, so, understanding, yes, the, the, the kind of unique dynamics of being in the high altitude or high alpine environment. Um, I'm curious, and you may not know this, but, um, in other parts of the world and in these environments, they've moved to using hydronics, um, somewhat it can be used with geothermal. And I'm curious if you know, um, if we are to move in that direction, if concrete or pavement is the preferred, um, kinda top layer, if you are to use hydronics, which would take away the need for plows and, and chains, um, if we were to look at that, would it be better to use a concrete surface or asphalt? And again, I, I know you may not know that, cause I don't know a project, or anywhere in California using hydronics, but just curious.
Um, I don't know that. We could have, um, we could do some research on it if, uh, that is something that you guys would like to, we could take a look at it. But one of the things that you have to understand, that hydronics and hi- um, geothermal are very new ideas, right? So it would take some time. Caltrans is a very large train that moves slowly, right? So it, it's not just getting the pavement out there, you also have to be man- able to maintain it, right? You have to have the maintenance crews out there, you have to have the, uh, technical expertise to maintain it and everything else. Um, if that is something that you guys, uh, are interested in considering, or, um, would like to study, that is something that maybe, um, we could, uh, do a co-op agreement, or something that, something that you guys could fund, um, like I said, we're fiscally constrained. That is a, that is our biggest issue, is we are fiscally constrained. So that is, if it, there's a feasibility study that you guys wanna do, you can definitely bring that up to Caltrans, and we could take a look at and see how we could make that work.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we look at the seven-mile stretch of Highway fifty from the Y to state line, um, and we look at how we deal with the snow removal, we move, you know, all of our snow to the, to the middle lane, um, and then we were using dump trucks and the blower. Um, with our goals of carbon reduction in the city, um, I think that, yeah, it's something that we should definitely explore. Um, I know in, you know, the US, it hasn't been used a lot, but, you know, Japan, Switzerland, all over the world, and these environments, they have put it to use. Um, and again, I think there's such big cost savings if we were able to eliminate the dump trucks having to haul that snow away, the public safety improvements that we could see by not having iced roadways, um, and, and just a lot of things. So I think that it's something well worth looking at the feasibility of, um, and trying to figure out those answers around whether, um, concrete or asphalt would be the better, you know, uh, application. I think we do know that concrete will last much farther than asphalt if it wasn't under the conditions of the fr- the, the thaw and freeze, and also the plows and the chains and all those. So, to me, I think it's well worth us looking at and, um, and, and exploring.
That's maybe something that you guys could take the lead on, we can support. Um, it's also, what you have to understand, this is a very new technique, right? So it, it would, it would take a couple, uh, take a little while to research.
Right, understood, yes, most definitely. Um, great, well, for me, I think that's really, um, my only questions. If there's no other questions, um, then we'll go ahead and open up, uh, Mr. Public Comment. Thank you so much for, uh, for being here. Um, with that, we'll go ahead and open up Public Comment on item number twenty. Uh, anybody in the room that would like to give a public comment? Yes, mm, go ahead and come forward and just state your name for the record.
Hi, Karen Willison again. Um, as we were sitting out there discussing what we were doing before, we were kind of listening to this, and I concur that, um, something needs to be done about the roads. Um, they have not really changed, um, since nineteen-seventies. Um, and I don't think that the, um, asphalt is, is working for town. I mean, if you just compare Highway, uh, eighty, which is concrete, to Highway fifty, I mean, every year they're working on Highway fifty and Highway eighty, they're doing a patch here or there, but it's, it's just, it works. It lasts, chains work on that much better than they do on the, the asphalt. Asphalt just gets chewed up by the, um, the chains, et cetera. Um, I mean, there's been potholes, for instance, on, uh, Highway fifty and Park, that same corner. Um, there's potholes that occur every year, and not just once a year. They patch it, and not more than two weeks later, it's a hole again. And there's quite a few sinkholes, as you guys know, for the state line and the Y, et cetera. Um, I think that something needs to be changed. I think that the concrete is a better usage. I mean, when you go to cities, um, in Sacramento, or towns and, and areas in Sacramento, to San Francisco, to Pasadena, um, they have cement, um, streets, and they have no issue, they've been there forever. Um, so I'd like to see something done, and I don't know much about the hydraulics, but, um, I do know that they use that in Europe, and I think that's something to consider, so. That's my comment.
Great, thank you for your comments. Uh, anybody else with public comment? Yes, just state your name for the record.
Scott Lowberg. Um, I understand there's a project in the hopper from, uh, resurfacing from, uh, state line to, uh, Altajo Boulevard. And if that could go to, um, the bridge over Trout Creek, because from Altajo Boulevard to Trout Creek, it's not, not necessarily, um, Trout Creek, it's not, not necessarily only damage to the road, looks like there's been some utility work under there that wasn't properly covered. The other question is, for asphalt and concrete, is there a difference if we use that recycled asphalt instead of sand? Or if we, would you use salt on the roadway if that would preserve it longer? Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Moser.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. First thing, Cody, you mentioned about the center lane, the snow removal and trucks running all day and, and the environmental effects of that. And I've mentioned about the city getting them and why Caltrans doesn't get snow melters. Do have drains along the highway and, and we have, you know, catch basins, number of places that, that it could be run into. And, you know, even Crescent V bought a snow dragon, they didn't have to use it last year, so it just sat in their back parking lot, but they finally realized that, you know, after good heavy snow years there, that's going to save them time and money and expense and also create a heck of a lot more parking area. So, you know, big cities use them where they have heavy snow, you know, Cleveland, Minneapolis, Philadelphia, a lot of places have them and for a reason. As far as the, the asphalt, you know, I've mentioned a few times where in Arizona, they've been using for decades, you know, at least first time I saw it in 1970, thereby through Flagstaff, up and down, east and west of Flagstaff, using crushed volcanic rock in the asphalt. And it dissipates heat, so where they have the same as us, they're at high altitude and roads get real hot in the summer, cool down in the evening, so you have expansion contraction on a daily basis and then also in winter with snow and snow removal. So it seemed to work there and I don't know if they're still using it, if they've run out of volcanic rock or what, but I haven't been down there for about 25, 28 years. But roads were in great shape and they did it for a reason, you know, they did tests. So I would like to see Caltrans maybe do a test section here in town. You can get, I checked, down 395, you can get volcanic rock, you know, they package it up for sale in bags in stores and stuff and everything, but you can buy it in bulk and do test sections and, and see that if that improves, should improve the road surface and make it last longer. And city also to use it for any, any new bike trails that you use, use that so that they, you don't get the kidney kicker cracks in, in the bike paths or anything that we get. So also, yeah, I mean, we can't even get Safeway, you know, to repair their concrete driveway there. I mean, and that concrete, when it holes like in Safeway's driveway, really does damage, severe damage to tires and cuts sidewalls of tires very easily, so, and you, and you have to replace the tire. So, and if it's four wheel drive, you end up replacing two or four of them. So, yeah, maybe even give Safeway a call and ask them to please, because I asked the manager there a couple of times and then they haven't done it. They just filled in two or three little spots with asphalt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on agenda item 20. No additional public comments, Mayor.
Great, with that, we will go ahead and move on to council comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for you. I'm sorry, I forgot your name, the representative from Caltrans. I apologize.
That's fine.
Mr. Lowberg mentioned the project that you guys have in, in planning for state line to Al Tahoe. Will you go to Trout Creek? And the reason I ask this is because the previous huge project that you did in, what, 2017, 2018, 2019, went from the Y to Trout Creek? And there is that small section between the bridge and Al Tahoe that is, I drive daily and it's really bad. So is that, is that, are you going to connect to the previous project?
Let me look into that, into details. I believe the project that we're referring to is already in, getting close to construction. So I, if it's already at that stage, it would be hard to add that portion in. But let me look into that and see what we, where we're at and we will get back to you. No worries.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Any other council members? Mr. Robbins, no? So, yeah, for me, I think that exploring the feasibility around using hydronics, but not only hydronics, really looking at what's capable through geothermal is really something that we should explore. Again, knowing that there's kind of a lot with that and that the city may really need to be kind of who initiates that and works with Caltrans, I just really believe, for one, we are one of the most active geothermal places on the planet, this area of Reno and Tahoe. So I think that it's well worth it. And as a council, we could look at even a smaller kind of feasibility study. We have boiler replacements that are coming up in the village, which the city owns two of by the transit center. We've spent an unbelievable amount of money on natural gas to heat those boilers and they're coming up on a 20-year life cycle of replacement needs. So I think that looking into the initial feasibility and putting out an RFP for the geothermal experts in our area to just see what is capable from drilling a well to, that would actually work to heat those is something that, to give us data to know if we look at that small area for the village, what could be capable in the roadway. And, and again, knowing that that boiler replacement is going to be coming up soon, I think it's a good time for us to, to kind of look at directing staff to see if, if there's feasibility in it and so.
Mayor Bass?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that this is a receive and file, so there's no action by the council on this item, but if you wanted to request a second to bring that back at a future date, we could do that.
Okay. Would you like me to do that APC or can I ask for the second now?
You can do it now or at the end of the meeting.
Okay. So, yeah, is there a second to, to look at that feasibility? Okay, great. Well, I think with that, thank you so much for being here and.
Mayor, may I ask?
Clarifying question.
Sure. First of all, Ms. Gill, thanks for your expertise and presentation. I appreciate you taking time to be here and Caltrans and the relationship has vastly improved between the city and Caltrans and I appreciate all of that. The feasibility study, what is the request? To come back to council, to work with Caltrans? I'm, I'm not sure what I'm understanding.
Yeah, sure. I, to me, it's really about us and, and yes, working with Caltrans, but I think the RFP really may explore the Heavenly Village area and really it's exploring with geothermal experts what is feasible. Are, if we are to drill a geothermal well, are we going to hit the right pockets of geothermal that will efficiently heat those boilers, not using natural gas, but using the?
This is a second that you want city staff to take the lead on that. So when that comes back as a staff report, it will definitely address that issue, but it will definitely address what we're going to be removing from our plate, just so you know. I mean, that's a big task, I think, and our work plan is already overloaded and I just want to be clear about all that.
Yeah, no, and, and it really is not to put the, it's to go out to RFP for a consultant that's an expert. So I don't expect that the staff, from my perspective, is not who's doing the, the work. It would just be putting out an RFP and we have a number of geothermal experts in the Reno area that I think will, it'll go. So, yes, it's definitely not to put more load on staff, but just to go out for an RFP for, for a consultant.
Well, that's clear. Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you again. And with that, we will go ahead and move on to item number 21. This is our annual report on homelessness and this will be Ms. Wackenhut Lumeli.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Jessica Wackenhut, housing manager with the city. Today I'm going to provide the annual report on homelessness. First, I'm going to dive into some data on homelessness and then I'll talk about the current systems in place and the coordination happening. Today I also want to mention that we're really fortunate to have some guests here. So many of them were represented in the report, in the staff report, to address any questions at the end of the presentation. The first I'll mention is Officer Matt Hazlitt. He's the STACS officer with SLTPD. Timolin James, who's the Assistant Director of Human Services for the Health and Human Services Department for El Dorado County. Chris Proctor, Director of Community Benefit and Business Development for Barton Health. Kimberly Peterson, Executive Director for Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. Chelsea Thomas, Executive Director for Live Violence Free. So on this first slide, I really want to look at the latest point in time count that was released on Friday. The actual report is going to come out later, but all of these numbers have been verified. The PIT town, sorry, the point in time count, so PIT, those are mandated by HUD and take place the last week of January every two years by volunteers. The sheltered count is done yearly and individuals are interviewed during this time. As you can see in this chart, in 2024, there have been significant strides to reduce both sheltered and unsheltered populations of people experiencing homelessness. We also know that a majority of people who are experiencing homelessness in El Dorado County have had their permanent residence also within the county. So I know a lot of times people are talking about people moving up into the county because of services, but we know through these counts and the data that this isn't true. The point in time survey data also shows the reported barriers to permanent housing by unhoused people in El Dorado County. You can see that 44 respondents said that people cannot afford rent and 22 respondents said that they have no money for a security deposit or first or last month rent. While this is not great news, it's also mutually reinforcing the fact that the city's Housing Division and Development Services have been focused on developing and preserving deed restricted affordable housing units and the new rental assistance program that's assisting individuals with security deposit assistance. The first thing I'm going to sort of talk about, which is like overseeing homelessness within the county, is the El Dorado Opportunity NOx Continuum of Care. There's a lot of things that are acronyms, so I'm going to use the acronym moving forward because of all the words. So I'll refer to this as the COC. So COCs are required by HUD and there's a regional, and what they do is they're a regional planning body of representative stakeholders in the county to coordinate on the policies, strategies and activities towards preventing and ending homelessness. So some of the things are listed up here, such as gathering and analyzing information. So I mentioned the point in time count, that's actually done under the COC umbrella, but there's a lot of other data that's collected regularly and I'll get into that a little bit later. There's also public meetings for the COC that occur regularly and strategic plans about moving forward and a homelessness action plan as well. This chart is really hard to read, but I just want to talk about an overview of what it is and why it's important to understand. So part of the COC is the Coordinated Entry System. This system is really just an intake process for people who are experiencing homelessness or walk into some of the agencies and need some type of support or resources. So it really looks at people and takes their vulnerability score to understand what resources should be offered to the individuals or the families. Now I'm going to dive into some of the roles of some of the city departments and by no means does it mean other departments don't touch homelessness, but these are the ones that are normally coordinating on homelessness. So the first, as I mentioned, was the police department. So there's South Tahoe Alternative Collaborative Services or STACS. Chief Stevenson created the STACS program to improve the police department's response to homelessness, substance use issues and mental health related calls while collaborating with regional partners. There's a long list of regional partners that they regularly interact with, but there are a few that they talk to more regularly. STACS provides referrals to relevant agencies and also works on illegal camping. One thing that I thought was really interesting when I was putting together this report after talking with Officer Hazlitt was they worked on a massive cleanup in the meadows behind Motel 6 and this was this past year, past summer in 2023. However, in 2024, there, there has not been a single mass cleanup since many individuals have been placed in housing or received other services. STACS also works closely with Clean Tahoe on these various cleanups. The next is the Development Services Department. As I mentioned, I talked about the Rental Assistance Program, which supports security deposit assistance, the Housing Hotlines, which is where individuals can call for substandard housing conditions. In addition, we also have the Community Development Block Grant, CV23 funding for the Bear's Den Affordable Housing Rehabilitation Project. So that project is really, we all are familiar with Sugar Pine Village and the new project beginning at 3900 Lake Tahoe Boulevard. The area median incomes are different, so for this project at the Bear's Den, the AMIs are lower. Now I'm going to talk about some of our external partners in the region. The first is El Dorado County. They serve as the administrative entity for the COC and they also have a joint response with STACS. So that's through behavioral health. One of their therapists will often go out with Officer Hazlitt to some, to meet with some individuals to provide resources. There's also the El Dorado County Sheriff's Office, the Homeless Outreach Team or HOT Team, and they have a temporary 60-bed shelter navigation center right now and that's access through encampment, abatement or coordinated, coordinated entry. So that's newer and they're looking to make it permanent. And then with Barton Health, so they also hold a board position on the COC. They provide a lot of referrals from inpatient emergency department to both Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. If TCH cannot do any intakes for some of the individuals coming out of the emergency department, then they are able to refer them to Reno to go to the Nevada Cares Campus as well. And then they also have emerging program in addiction treatment that's up here as well. The next is Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. So you all are pretty familiar that they have, the city and TCH have an MOU in place and that's been in place since September 2020. They serve as the front door, which is the name of the Coordinated Entry System for El Dorado County. So they serve the entire county and do those intake assessments that I mentioned earlier. They also receive a lot of referrals from the police department as well as Barton Health, among many others. Our Housing Hotlines, sometimes we refer them as well. They also operate a 16-bed shelter and own 72 units of permanent housing. Live Violence Free has had an MOU with the city since July of 2021. They work very closely with the police department. They also operate a 12-bed shelter, master at least four units that are two bedrooms each to serve as transitional housing. This is on top of all the other services that are provided by each one of these organizations. And some of the final thoughts were in the end of the staff report is that I really wanted to highlight some of the financial concerns that we see with two of our critical partners, that's Live Violence Free and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. Funding at the state and federal levels have drastically shifted in both of the different types of programs that they offer and that creates some challenges to maintain programs and services for clients. Live Violence Free was 40% funded by the Federal Victim of Crimes Act. This funding source has dropped drastically. The funding was, has been used until this time for the shelter that they operate, the transitional housing, rental assistance and overall operating costs for their organization. Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless is eligible for a lot of different grants because we all know there's a lot of grants around homelessness as well as affordable housing construction, but funding is typically capped only for those capital projects and services, leaving no funds for operating costs unless you directly touch, work with a client. And the other challenge is that most of these grants that you get at both the state and federal levels are reimbursement based. So that creates a lot of issues. I oversee a lot of the grant reimbursement, TCH does, and some of the times they're reimbursing 200,000, like $100,000 and so they have to come up with that, wait for us to process it, wait for the state to process that and then they get paid out. So today I gave a general overview of the systems and partners working on the nuanced issue to ensure that this is a collective approach to preventing and ending homelessness. I'll take any questions or direct them to any of the partners in attendance today. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lameli. Appreciate it. Ms. Wallace?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I.
I was wondering if the PIT count, and I should probably know this, but I don't, does it include partially housed, like people who live in their cars or people who are living in motels? Does that, do those numbers include those?
I'm going to invite Tim Lemon up here from El Dorado County.
Okay. While she's coming up, do we have South Lake Tahoe numbers or the basin numbers separate from the, I noticed that the graph only included all of El Dorado County.
Yes. So in answer to your first question, the PIT count includes persons that are staying in places not meant for human habitation. So yes, it includes cars, RVs that are not permanently at an RV park, something like that. And as far as the, the actual PIT report will be released through the COC, and it will probably be maybe two weeks at most. It's just about finished, and it will have a breakdown of South Lake Tahoe versus West Loop.
Thank you very much.
Any other PIT count questions that I can answer?
No, I think we're good. Great, any other council members? Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, this slide here, I just, I was, I'm not sure if I missed it, the sheltered versus unsheltered count, the unsheltered count is only intermittent, not annual. What drives that?
It's a HUD requirement, it's every two years.
Okay, so some of these are every other year, this one, I guess the 2019 to 2022 that was over COVID, it just didn't get done?
That's exactly what, it was an extension.
That's why there's a gap, okay.
Yes, through COVID, yes.
Okay, so that's, all right, that's what, that was my question, what, why is there, it looked like it's every two years, except one, it was every three, and that was that particular COVID year.
Yeah, we had the option to apply for the waiver in '21 due to COVID, and so we, we did apply for the waiver.
My other question, and my other question was also the one that was just asked about basin side specific numbers.
And even some of the questions that were mentioned, so what happened was the, the initial numbers were presented at the COC Board Meeting on Friday, and in that meeting, some questions came up specifically regarding can we separate the data, and so that's why the report's not released yet, so we're working on making sure we meet everyone's needs.
And I guess a similar question for, for the city side staff is, what about the counts similarly on the Nevada side? Because as much as it's two separate governments, from the standpoint of someone experiencing homelessness, it's one continuous population center, one continuous, you know, economic and housing environment. So, you know, when we talk about the numbers in the city of South Lake Tahoe that impact our homeless resources, people are going to move across the state lines pretty fluidly here, so is there any information on homeless data next door?
I don't have, I haven't looked for it, and I haven't, but I could try to pull it up and to see what their numbers are. I don't know if you communicate with.
I can add to that. The vendor that helped with the COC's PIT count is the vendor that also helped with Nevada's PIT count, so I can ask the vendor, when Nevada's is released, can they make sure that we get a copy of it?
Yeah, and it's, because it's a similar situation where, you know, Carson, Mindit, you know, the rest of Douglas County is kind of different than the basin side of Douglas County, similar to the El Dorado County, but from the standpoint of, of a person trying to find housing, it's one economic area, you know, one geographic area. So having an understanding of the homeless numbers in the basin combined for the El Dorado County portion of the basin and the Douglas County portion of the basin, those are going to be shared, and those are going to similarly impact the resources that are available to, to address homelessness overall. So it'd be good to have those numbers in a combined way if that could be provided. Okay.
Great, all right, thank you, Mr. Robbins. With that, if we have no more questions, thank you, Ms. Lameli, we will go ahead and open this up to public comment. Anybody in the room that would like to give public comment on this item? All right, oh yes, go ahead and come forward.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Chelsea Thomas, and I have the honor of serving as the Executive Director at Live Violence Free. I'm here today to speak on the city's annual homelessness report, specifically highlighting the critical intersection between homelessness and the survivors we serve, as well as the importance of collaboration and city support in addressing these complex challenges. Homelessness is rarely an isolated issue. For survivors we work with, housing instability is often a direct consequence of fleeing violence, leaving unsafe environments, or losing financial security due to abuse. Domestic violence remains one of the leading causes of homelessness, intersecting with many systems and issues. Survivors face unique barriers to safe housing, including fear of being found, financial instability, trauma, involvement in the legal system, limited affordable housing, landlord discrimination, and inadequate survivor-focused programs. This is where the role of city government and collaboration amongst our partners is most critical. Our housing services, including emergency shelter, transitional housing, and long-term housing solutions, serving close to two hundred clients each year, not only provide immediate safety, but also prevent cycles of homelessness from continuing. However, without substantial support and collaborative community partnerships, we struggle to meet the growing demands for services. The report shows how vital housing services are in addressing homelessness, and for survivors, safe housing is a lifeline that can mean the difference between breaking free from abuse or returning to a dangerous situation. Our organization works to alleviate homelessness for survivors, but we cannot do it alone. We know our work contributes to the overall well-being of our community and builds a community that is safer, stronger, and more resilient. Collaborative efforts are key to sustaining services. Because abuse and housing insecurity are complex issues, they require a diverse set of resources, expertise, and systems of support. Through collaboration, we see better outcomes for survivors through increased access to resources, long-term housing stability, enhanced community safety, stronger community networks, and reduced re-traumatization. By combining strengths of multiple stakeholders, collaboration breaks down barriers, fosters community responsibility, and promotes holistic care, ultimately improving outcomes for survivors facing homelessness. We support the city in continuing to prioritize housing and homeless service in our strategic, in your strategic planning, and to recognize the crucial role that our partnerships play in reducing homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and open up our Zoom, oh yes, Mr. Proctor.
Put a different hat on today, Chris Proctor with Barton Health. For the record, I just want to say that everything Chelsea said right there was just amazing and on point. I'd also like to talk a little bit about what, what the challenge is when we talk about our most vulnerable community members. It's not anyone's job, it's everyone's job. And, and you can see, I hope, from the report that Ms. Wackenhart gave you, that it really does take community to figure this out. And when we think about some of the impacts in the healthcare system, there's something called unintended ER visits. Unintended ER visits are those visits that really aren't emergent, but they come to the ER. And before we had Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless and Live Violence Free and some of our other partners, a lot of times, if someone was unhoused, their only recourse was to go to the emergency room. It's not a bad thing, because our emergency room is able to handle it, but if you think about capacity, if the emergency room is full of individuals that could be seen somewhere else, then those individuals that need emergent care might have to get transferred to another place. So we, we're so happy for the partnership, and I want to give Chief Stevenson a lot of credit, it's good that he's not here, because his head would swell, but he started a lot of the, the supportive services that we're talking about today. STACS was something that really was born out of the pandemic. We had a lot of meetings, and the idea to really divert individuals to the care that they need before they end up in the ER or before they end up in jail is really what we should be about. And so Barton Health is very supportive of these initiatives, we really enjoy our partnership with the agencies that are here today, and I just wanted to share that with the council. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Proctor. Anybody else here in the room that would like to give public comment? Yes, Mr. Irvin?
Sorry, Mayor, I want to follow up on those comments. It does take all of us working on this effort. I asked Zach and Jessica and team to highlight the financial implications in the staff report that Live Violence Free and Tahoe Coalition for Homeless are having. I think, you know, I, I look at the agenda item earlier on South Shore Transportation Management Association. Transit's a goal for the city, we're putting money into it, there's an entity providing that service. So I want us to keep an open mind as we think about how to work together on filling that operational gap that these two nonprofits are having. It's just something that I think we've seen good momentum and community building come together to actually solve the need for this vulnerable population, and it's just something I think we can't not recognize, so.
Thank you so much for the comments. Ms. Wallace?
You know, I don't think we took Zoom.
Oh, excuse me, yes, so we'll come back.
Go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on this item, '21? No additional public comments, Mayor.
All right, we will go ahead and bring that back to council, Ms. Wallace.
Mr. Irvin, do you have some idea of what the, the financial needs are for the two agencies? Is there, is, because I looked in the report and I didn't see it, so maybe I'm missing it.
I don't have a specific number. I know at a high level, Live Violence Free, VOCA funding has cut dramatically, that's a federal block grant that goes to the states, and that's a lot of money they use for operating. I know that Tahoe Coalition in the last four or five years has reshaped their mission to getting out of warming, per se, just a warming shelter that rotated to actually providing permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, and that requires people to be boots on the ground. And the grants that the governor and HCD and people have given don't have any of that supporting operation money. So if we want to sustain these, we need to find a way to get some amount of funding. I know that both of these organizations have applied for our cannabis revenue grants in the past, that's a competitive process, and there's a lot of needs, we know that. There's a lot of really valuable community nonprofits, and they've competed against those, they haven't come up to, to, to win that award the last couple of years, some of those nonprofits. So I, I don't know the specific number, you know, they may be able to give us an, an understanding if you'd like to hear from the executive directors of both of those nonprofits.
No, that's okay. A follow-up question, though, are you, are you referring to direct funding, grant funding, or both? Or, or help with grant funding?
Yeah, no, it's a great question, because I think the city council's done a lot of work to organize the way we fund our nonprofits in town, and I, I give council credit for staying true to that system. But recognizing that this is a safety net system for those that have bad luck, lose a job, family member dies, something happens where they need that safety net, I think there could be a way that city staff, if council wanted to give us direction, could negotiate some kind of operating agreement with each of these to support them for that service that they offer that supports our police department in these times where they're called out for services, different than a grant appropriation.
Thank you for that clarification.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wallace. Any other council members that would like to comment on this item? All right, thank you so much for the great work and the presentation, it's such a need in our community. So with that, we, this is a receive and file, so we will go ahead and move on to item number 22. This is going to be the Patagonia product procurement, and this will be Ms. Roverood.
Hello, Mayor Bass, members of council, I'm Hillary Roverood, Assistant City Manager. This item was requested to be brought for discussion among the council at the August sixteenth, I'm sorry, August thirteenth meeting. The request came from Mayor Cody Bass, with a second from Councilmember Wallace. The discussion is regarding procurement of Patagonia clothing for, clothing and outdoor, outerwear that the city purchases for employees that have, you know, city logo and branding on them. And the discussion is whether we should be looking at this as an opportunity to further the city council's adopted policy to desire purchasing environmentally preferable products whenever economically feasible. The Patagonia company, in their stated goals, commitments, and their business practices, have very unique and very aggressive measures to address a reduction in GHG emissions in their industry. There's some details outlined in the staff report, but it clearly is an environmentally focused company working towards those goals. The city does maintain a procurement policy. Department directors have the authority to make purchases up to ten thousand dollars, and departments often include in their operating budgets a purchase of clothing items for employees. These range from uniform items, outerwear, polo shirts, t-shirts, hats, a variety of different things. However, the departments currently select the vendors or the brands that most closely fit the needs of the department within their spending budget and, within their spending budget, I'll just leave it at that. We did lay out three different options for the city council to consider with respect to a, a discussion about Patagonia products being a preferred product for the city to purchase. One option is that we prepare a request for quotes that includes standards to minimize environmental impacts and have companies provide proposals to the city to be evaluated for these future outerwear and clothing purchases. A second option is to develop a specific, have the city council adopt a specific policy requiring clothing and outerwear purchases to be made through Patagonia due to their unique and unmatched environmental sustainability standards. A third option is to proceed with opening a group purchase account with Patagonia for departments to voluntarily make bulk orders for their specific purposes. This, the third option would allow departments to have some flexibility to purchase products from other vendors when there's not a Patagonia product that meets their operational or safety needs, and to manage their purchases within their operating budgets. So that is keyed up for council discussion. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Roverood. Any council members that have questions? All right, Ms. Wallace?
Doing the math really quickly, about the third option, about an example with the current discounted pricing, an order of fifty outerwear shell jacklets would likely exceed the ten thousand dollar limit. Ballpark guesstimate, what do we currently pay for something like that?
It really does, there's a pretty wide range among the departments, you know, some departments go for, you know, they may not have quite the wear and tear on a particular item, and so they go for something that perhaps is not as expensive. Other departments have made purchases of Patagonia products in the past. You know, an outerwear shell from Patagonia that normally retails is three hundred dollars with a discount, you're talking about a hundred and eighty dollars. You know, and I'd, I'd say that's probably the, the higher end of, of purchases that city departments make. You know, there's also, you know, I'll use the Parks and Recreation Department as an example, you know, they're mostly doing t-shirts, you know, for their, their staff or polo shirts, you know, not quite the kind of potential wear and tear and damage to that type of clothing item that the fire department might experience.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't have a specific number for you, but hopefully that helps.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, any, Ms. Krieger?
Thank you. Which of these three options is most like our current policy?
It would be the third option, the option to just open a group discount account with Patagonia and encourage departments to look at that as an opportunity, because we do have the policy to prefer environmentally conscious products that would not require action by the city council. We would just need to probably do a little more monitoring to make sure we don't exceed the spending limit for department director approvals.
Thank you, Ms. Krieger, and Mr. Robbins, any questions? All right, with that, we will go ahead and move to public comment on this item. Anybody in the Anybody in the room that would like to give public comment on item number 22? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and open up to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll go and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on agenda item 22. No public comments at this time, Mayor.
Great. So with that, we will go ahead and bring this back to council for discussion. Any other council members that would like to give discussion? Ms. Kerrigan?
I was not at the meeting when this was on the APC, so I'm just sort of based only on the presentation and the staff report. I'm really comfortable with the procurement policy now. I like Patagonia stuff too, totally. But I definitely liked the flexibility for the people who are wearing it and making the decision. I don't really think that should come from us, especially if we already have an environmental, you know, sustainability piece in our procurement policy. And hearing that we did, I, so I feel really comfortable with that. That would be what I'd support.
Okay. Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, I just, I think caution is, is important here. We, a few years ago, a handful of years ago, we spent a modest, we, the city spent what in absolute dollar terms was a relatively small amount of money on the fireplace and, and I think we're still, you know, we're still hearing about it. And, you know, in, the, the cost to public trust vastly exceeded the number of dollars and I'm, I just, I'm cautious about the public perception of, you know, Pataguchi, this, this is an expensive, it is good stuff. Their environmental standards are very good, but it's also expensive stuff. And I'm, I'm just cautious about the public perception here that this is a, this is seen as a luxury item that isn't necessarily essential for executing on the city's operations. So I'm, I'm fine with sort of the, the third option of saying, let's allow it within the existing procurement. I'm just, I'm sensitive to the public perception issue that we're gonna, you know, that the public might see this and then think we're gonna order dozens and dozens of, you know, jackets for everyone. And that, that wouldn't be the case, but I'm, I'm just sensitive to the, to the perception issue around, you know, expensive outerwear brands for, for that. Given, given, you know, it is, it is a good, it is, their environmental commitments are good, but it is also perceived as a very high luxury item. So that's my concern. And I just want to be cautious about that.
All right. So yeah, for me, I brought this item forward and, and for me, I, what I look at it is our real goals and commitments to sustainability. And when we print our logo on something, I think the, you know, material, the, the company that we're selecting should really be in line with the same sustainability goals we have. And Patagonia has gone even farther, looking back at fair trade and making sure that they're not using sweatshops to produce their clothing, to the materials that they use and source throughout the planet to make sure that they are sustainable and fair trade, all the way up to what is known as 1% for the planet, which was 1% of revenue across multiple companies going back to environmental nonprofits. And most recently, Yvonne Shinard, the owner and founder of Patagonia, in September of 2022, actually donated the entire company and all of the revenue and profits that will ever be made from Patagonia to environmental nonprofits. And if anybody wants to look up the letter, it's called Earth is Now Our Only Shareholder. So when we look at the money that we would be giving into Patagonia, a fair amount of that is coming back into saving our planet to climate change. And the reality is, yes, it is a higher value brand at a retail level. We would be able to get a business-to-business account, which can give us anywhere from, I believe, a 30% up to a 50% discount on what the retail cost is. So again, looking at a $300 jacket is down to 180 or 150 bucks. That's probably about the same that you're gonna get from somebody like Carhartt or some of these other suppliers. And my suggestion is definitely not to require this for, you know, for instance, when the police department needs to get flak jackets, Patagonia clearly doesn't make flak jackets. So we're not gonna say to the police department, hey, you gotta go through Patagonia for those items. But where it is feasible, if we're talking about T-shirts with the City of South Lake Tahoe brand on it, I think the fact that we choose Patagonia, knowing that funding is gonna go back to environmental nonprofits here in Lake Tahoe, as well as across the world to help climate change, just to me, very much matches up with what our goals have been around sustainability. I think that when you look at the department heads and the $10,000 spending limit that they have without the need for council approval, you know, how many times is the department really looking to print more than 50 shirts, right? And we don't have in the city a whole lot of, you know, other cities do where we're giving away T-shirts to our constituents or, but we do in certain aspects have some of that. And I think that can go through like a city manager's office, which has a much higher spending limit. So, you know, if we're ordering T-shirts that are to be given away to the public and those type of things, it could come under the city manager. I'm not opposed to option three and kind of leaving that open because again, there's needs in the police department, the fire department that clearly aren't gonna, Patagonia is not gonna be able to fulfill that. But I do think us encouraging us to go through Patagonia is, again, so much in line with our ethics, our standards. There, there are many other things I could talk about with, with what Patagonia has done in the way that they operate their business, take care of their employees, take care of their communities. As well, they're a California company based out of Ventura with their largest distribution in Reno. So looking at them in a sense also as a local company in a lot of ways. I think that it's just responsible, and I do think it makes a statement for people that do follow these things when, when they realize that we choose a company like Patagonia rather than a company that looks to maximize their profits with no care to the environment and knowing that most of those companies, their profits are gonna go to shareholders, not to Earth is the only shareholder. So I think that, again, to me, it's, it's just what is right. It lines up so much with, with our goals. And yeah, I think it, I think it's really a responsible thing. But I am comfortable with item three. I wish we could somewhat put in, not as a requirement, but strongly encouraged, I guess. And with an understanding that some of these things, you're not gonna be able to procure from, from Patagonia, and that's, that's understandable. So yeah, I guess I'd open it up to see where other folks here on council are.
I think you have agreement that we all think that item number three is the option. I, yeah. And I, I see both sides. I see that we need to be fiscally responsible, but I also see that we need to take care of our employees and pay a little bit more for outdoor clothing for people working in weather, so on and so forth. I am 100% behind that. And the discount is great. So I'm prepared to make a motion.
Really quick, I just want to reiterate, the $10,000 citywide for the business-to-business account, just so we know.
Could you?
It's not per department. So if it exceeds 10,000, then we will have to change our procurement, uh, the strategy, right? Or can you clarify? I mean, we would have to go out to bid and get three proposals from various companies if it exceeds $10,000. Okay, thank you.
We will need to collect three informal quotes if the purchase citywide exceeds $10,000. If it exceeds $60,000, we will need to open it to formal bid.
Okay. I, I need clarification. For instance, if the fire department decides to make a purchase in January and then building, the Development Services does it in March and then another department, that's, it's 10,000 per year total?
Correct.
10,000 is per vendor. So once it exceeds $10,000, single per, not a single purchase, but overall purchase since it's a business-to-business account, so it's a one account for the whole city. When it exceeds $10,000, we will have to collect three informal quotes using the criteria for.
And currently, the reason that we don't hit that is because each department purchases from different companies?
Well,
Sort of.
we actually do hit it.
Oh, okay.
We do solicit informal quotes or we do go out to public bid if it exceeds $60,000.
60. So can we change the procurement policy to more closely follow what we're talking about? And what is, can we do that through a motion or do we have to bring it back?
The purchasing policy can be changed only by ordinance. So we have a city code that talks about the limits. So the whole city code will need to be amended.
Um, I have a question. Let me ask a clarifying question. I know we're in the middle of formulating this, but I wanted to ask a clarifying question if I can. What are we wearing now, so to speak?
I can tell you. We, we talked about this, we talked about this at the senior management team meeting last week as we were preparing for this item. And you know, police department has their own gear that they need. Let's take them out of it. You know, in the winter, years ago, fire department started wearing coats. This last year, they changed to an outer shell that was Patagonia. Development Services has polos and T-shirts. Parks and Rec has polos and T-shirts and Public Works has polos and T-shirts. And I don't think I've ever seen one person in this building wear a uniform besides maybe airport staff a little bit.
And yeah, I guess the question is of, of the, you know, we have plenty of staff in the city that need to go from place to place and get out of their cars and go into some other building as part of their regular work. But that's, that presumably you just wear your, your own coat for that. So this would be, the intent here is for people whose job requires them to do extended amount of work outdoors, right, for, for shells and things like that. Right? Or for people who are wearing sort of matching uniforms for various reasons. And it sounds like that would be the police department, the fire department. I guess, does, does Public Works, I mean, they have, they, they work outdoors.
Our Parks and Recreation staff and Public Works staff wear, uh, logoed identifiable, because they're out in the public, in our right of ways, in parks. But,
Doing city business outdoors, not just, not just commuting, you know, from place to place. So, and I would, I'm making an assumption here, but I'm assuming like the, the Public Works folks, they have PPE, they're wearing, they're wearing uniforms that are specific for, you know, the safety equipment and the vests and things like that, that are not necessarily gonna be the kinds of Patagonia shells that we're talking about here. So I'm just trying to figure out, we're talking about $10,000 being the limit. I'm trying to get a sense of how many job category people would be wearing this stuff in the first place.
I can tell you that, as I said.
$10,000 is a reasonable amount, maybe.
Well, just so you know, last year, the fire department went up to about $7,000 or $8,000.
Okay.
So that's just one department for outer shells.
Thanks. I mean, I, I think that probably we're like getting out of our realm here. I, I don't want to tell anybody what they should be wearing at all. I, you know what I mean? So I totally appreciate you bringing this. And if there's, you know, appetite to, to change by ordinance, the procurement policy, then that can be done. But I feel like today we should either go with, I would support item three or option three or just option zero.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I think I, I today am definitely support with option three. I would say that looking at the procurement allowing Patagonia in particular to go over that limit is something that I'd be interested in. Again, I just think that when we look at the money that we're spending, especially knowing that any of the profits that were ever to be made out of Patagonia would go back to the earth forever. Essentially, the company has been given back to environmental nonprofits for the life of the company. I think to me, that makes sense to why we would want to see our funds go to that company rather than a company that is gonna send the money, profits back to Wall Street.
If I may suggest, council members, we can start with the $10,000 today and we will monitor. And if we exceed it very quickly, we will review and reconsider bringing this item back.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Ms. Krieger. Right. That, that works for me. You want to make a motion?
Yeah. So I make a motion that we direct city manager or his designee to open a B2B group discount account with Patagonia in compliance with the city's procurement policy.
Second.
All right, a motion in a second and we can vote. Do you need a break? Do you want to?
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have 11:45. I think we will go ahead and move on to item 23 before lunch, which this is gonna be an update on the city website improvements. And this will be Ms. Juarez.
Okay, good morning, Mayor Bass and council members. Getting over a call, so hopefully I can get through this without a coffee and food, but I think we'll be okay. So today I'm presenting on the update on city website improvements. And first I'm gonna share just a little background on the city website. It's been managed by Civic Plus since 2010 via a content management system. Most of you are probably familiar with that. But the content management system is a software application that allows users to easily create, edit, collaborate, publish, and store digital content. And that's really important so that all departments can have access to their webpages and update information in a timely manner. The last redesign for the city's website was completed approximately six years ago in 2018. As a part of the 2023-28 strategic plan, city council requested to redesign or revamp. And the emphasis was on mobile responsiveness, also known as mobile friendliness. This item is found under Strategic Priority 5.2, Digital Government, and is slated for this upcoming fiscal year. So website improvements so far. We recently created a redesign team and it's one representative from each department that's helping with cleaning things up. Responsibilities include making sure formatting's correct, and that's really important with ADA compliancy, updating keywords and descriptions to increase search engine optimization, removing outdated documents and information, and also making sure that links and contents are ADA friendly. The redesign team is also essential as we do the redesign with Civic Plus, getting their input and things that they want to focus on. And also utilizing, which is something new, a content consultant. And they're gonna help out with spending a certain amount of allotted hours to make sure that pages look and feel the way the department wants them. So it's really gonna enhance the webpage. And then on to mobile responsiveness. Again, we talked about mobile friendliness and this is when the content layout and functionality of the website automatically adapts to fit the screen. I'm sorry, didn't skip over. Let me catch up right there. And so with mobile responsiveness, one issue that we have seen is with the agendas. When you look at, on the agendas on your phone, they're not easy to access and you have to slide from left to right. And this is due to iframes. Whenever an iframe is used, it's pulling information essentially from an HTML to get videos, information, social media feeds. And so that's why you run into that issue. Other cities also have that problem. And unless you use where you're getting this information sourced from, and that comes from Granicus. If you use their website, then you could easily view that without having to scroll left and right. But that's the only way. But if you have anything else in iframes within your website, you're still gonna have that issue. So this is gonna solve one problem. Civic Plus did go in there earlier this year and they made it easier so that before, I don't think you could see everything in that frame, and now you can see everything and access the agenda. Yeah, and you have to turn it to. But you can if you're looking at it upright. And I'm hoping this plays. Let me see if I can. This kind of shows it too. This is just a quick little, quick video that shows how it looks and the changes that were updated from Civic Plus. And so you still do have to go from right to left or left to right. And it's not ideal, but it does get you the information that you need. And the next one just shows also, it's another video that shows other cities that also have the same, same issue. And it's with another, this one I think is Civic Plus. And then also we have another one from GovStack. And so all cities are essentially run into this issue.
Can that iframe be linked to independently directly so that you just load that section, that iframe as a link rather than loading it as an iframe within the page? That would, at least instead of having it be a page within a page, you could just link to it and just have that be what loads directly rather than having it be an iframe.
I believe Civic Plus looked at that and they weren't able to make that happen. But we can talk with Granicus because they mentioned that there's something they could possibly do. So we'd have to go back to them and see if that's an option.
Right, because when you go to like the agendas page, it's basically like a Right, because when you go to like the agendas page, it's basically like a wrapper, and then it's just the, the, the frame with just the Granicus, you know, agenda list in it. If you could just go to that page and have that be the page that, you know, that loads, you know, click here for list of agendas. That would, you know, rather than having it be a page within a page, you would at least just not have this like, this nested scrolling thing that we wind up doing, which is a little janky.
We can look at that and see if that's an option. Okay. And then redesign, just touching base on what the redesign includes. So it'll be a new layout and structure, new color palette, different use of modules. So just again, the layout, changing things around, ADI complacency, and mobile responsiveness when we can do that as well.
Actually, that is a follow-up question then. How does the, one of the objectives here should be, and that seems like you have in terms of ADA compliance, is being compatible with things like readers. Things that, you know, these are tools that automatically read the text on your screen for the visually impaired or that, that convert the text into Braille and whatnot. How does that work with the iframes as well? Because that, now you have like a bunch of this nested information that might make it harder. I'm not sure how that works with the, with the ADA, with the accessibility aspects of web design.
That's something we definitely have to look into. The two solutions we're looking at are AudioEye, which provides a screen reader, but we would have to work with them and ask them if that's going to be an issue as well.
So making, making it so that, I guess as an objective, rather than trying to get, you know, I'm going to, my tendency will get into like the little weeds about how we could set up the iframes just so, but, but forcing myself to step back from that. The objective should be to design the website in such a way that accessibility tools can easily digest it. And whatever the, the current right way of doing that is, is I think where we should make sure our focus is. I just want to make sure that's, that is how we're thinking about this in these terms.
Okay. And then just sharing a couple redesign examples. We have Beverly Hills here. They are using Civic Plus as well. Let me see if I can.
That's not going to work. It's trying to generate it as a video. It is playing, but on a different screen. I'm sorry.
So you can take a look at these if you'd like, just to kind of see the enhancements they've made with the redesign. There's City of Beverly Hills, City of Healdsburg, and also City of Santa Rosa. So those are just kind of some different looks that they've used to redesign their site, and that's something that we can do as well. So just giving it a fresh new look, and I think it's definitely time for us to have something new, so.
Can I ask a question about that? So Shree, the, when you say it's definitely time to do some refresh, like those ones, then those videos that we just kind of opened, the, the budget that was approved with the August 27th budget, and the numbers shown in your financial implication section here, does that address that we're going to be doing some of that redesign, the feature changes?
Yes, so that's included in the redesign of Civic Plus.
Good. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. So it's already been budgeted, and so we should see some change there.
Definitely, and also the ADA complacency solutions are included in that as well. And we'll go over that at the end, the budget too. And so next, the .gov domain. I believe IT is currently working on this with Civic Plus. Most of any of the, or any of the CMS providers have included this. So we need to shift to that, which is, there's still some time, but January 1st, 2029, this will be included as well. And then we're just going to discuss a little about the ADA website compliance software. This again is mandated for smaller cities by April 26, 2027. The two solutions that we're looking at that assist with complacency is AudioEye and Moncedo. And with AudioEye, if you're not familiar with those, that's a technology that helps provide the screen readers. And also, they share guidelines with having text alternative, time-based media, proper headings, lists and tables. And so that's a part of setting things up so that the screen readers can interpret the content. And so that's where we'd want to include the iframe too. For the Moncedo, that actually is another tool, and that helps with identifying broken links, pages or information that's outdated. And so that's something within each department that they would be assisting with. So they'll provide us, basically, right now, what I've seen is like a spreadsheet of areas that we need to fix or correct. And so that's going to be a long process, but that's something that we can work towards to be ADA compliant as well. And then lastly, we'll just touch base on the redesign cost. In here as well, in this table, is our annual cost and implementation first of the redesign, and then annual cost on the bottom. But the implementation is $14,000 with the ADA component, that's another 600, so $14,600. And then our annual cost currently to host and support is $9,700. We also pay for mass notification alerts, which is $12,000. And then the new ADA solution, $11,000 plus training, which was really important to continue training on using the website, having that content consultant to help with customizing the pages. So that's in there as well, and ADA training too. So it totals $35,200, and we already have in the budget $50,000 in the communications budget for this. And that's it, and I made it through without coffee, and I'm really excited.
Thank you so much, Ms. Juarez. And with that, we will go ahead and bring it back to council for questions. Ms. Wallace?
Thank you so much. So you already covered the mobile friendly and, and told us the problems with all of that. But I'm on our website almost every day, and I get this feedback from a lot of people in the community that it's not really user-friendly or intuitive. We're using government speak instead of real speak. And one of the things, have you considered to ask community members, users, to go onto the website and tell you where they think that we need some changes?
I think that would definitely be an important part of the process. So we can do a survey and ask what they think about it, and then help us with the redesign, use those comments and feedback.
Yeah, I, I don't, at least my opinion, I don't think we need to do a full survey. I think you could get like four or five people from the community come in and sit down with you and say, I have a hard time. Just look for stuff. Because one of the things that I have found is that our search engine, I'll search something that we did last meeting, and it comes up with something from 2015. And you have to wade through lots and lots and lots of stuff. And so, and then on the .us versus the .gov, is that going to include emails?
I believe so, but I'm not.
Okay. Just a suggestion, we should overlap like we did on the airport drive and Lisa Maloff drive for a while. Do some, something, but that's going to, a lot of people in the community are used to what we're using now. So.
I would assume that does auto, when you say we're switching to a new domain, we can still auto-forward, right? Or is that, I assume that's still allowed, right?
That I don't, I'm not sure, but I'm.
Emails will be auto-forwarded for a while.
I've gone through that. My great, yes, it will.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Any other council members with questions before we come back for comments? All right.
Auto-forward and auto redirect for the website, I presume as well? Yeah, okay.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Juarez. So with that, we will go ahead and open this up to public comment on item number 23. Yes, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Scott Holberg. I just want to make sure any redesign, when you click on a link, it doesn't redirect you to Facebook, because a lot of them do redirect you to Facebook, and there's no indication that that's where you're headed. Like with some of the activities, et cetera, you're forced to go onto Facebook. And there's no indication you're going to Facebook with that, especially any of the activities that are posted. I've had family that worked in big data and large office building with only the address on the side on the peninsula, and they would take multiple armored cars with the data to the data farms, and I don't want to be part of that. So I would like to just have that little indicator on there so you have that option. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment on item 23? Seeing none, we will go ahead and open up Zoom.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on Agenda Item 23. No public, additional public comments, ma'am.
All right, so great. We will bring it back to council for discussion and/or motions. Receive and file. I guess just for me, I definitely support the upgrade. I think that it's beyond time, and there's definitely things we can do. I do have one question, and I should have asked this before to Ms. Juarez. Are there different packages, essentially I'd call it, within Civic Plus? Kind of, I'll just put it to like bronze, silver, gold, where we can pay a little bit more to have a higher level website? Or does Civic Plus just kind of do one package for city websites?
You know, I'd have to look into that and see. I know like the content consultant was an add-on that we thought was important. But as we get into it, I'm sure there will be other things that we can look at as well.
Okay, great. And we'll be able to, that'll kind of come back to us essentially if we have other options that we want to maybe step up to the gold package. We'll decide that later.
Yeah, other options, and if it exceeds the amount that we have in our budget, then we would have to bring that back too.
Okay, great. All right, well, if there are no other questions, I think we, thank you so much for the good report. And we have, we'll be just receive and file. So, let's see, it is 12:03. I think we will break for lunch and come back at 12:40 for our final two items of the day. Yes.
Mayor.
Great. So we will call this meeting back to order. And we are on item number 24. This is the Airport Food and Beverage Lease and Concession Agreement with Flight Deck Grill and Golf Club. And this will be Mr. Dickinson.
It's, I just had the wrong one. I'm sorry. She was apologizing to John.
Oh, nice. All right.
It's going to be Tom McMurray and the Flight Deck Golfing Grill instead of the Barn Grill. We put an RFP out last January. And it took about 45 days to get the RFP winners back. We worked with Southern Hospitality for about two months and it fell through. So we went with the second RFP winner, which was the Flight Deck Barn Grill and Tom McMurray. Took us a couple of months to get everything situated, but you know, he's been a great partner during this and we were able to finalize the lease. I have him on the phone right now. I'm in Zoom call with Wes from their company. And they're going to go over a couple of slides with y'all. Wes and Tom, are you on?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll turn it over to them. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'm not sure if the presentation is up on the screen or if I need to share it here. Let's see. Not sure if I have the ability to share my screen.
No, I have the PowerPoint running.
Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, just let me know and I'll advance a slide for you.
Okay, yeah, if you want to go ahead and just get started, we'll dive right in. This is a, you know, it's a very broad overview of what we're planning for the, for the location. You know, I'm not actually able to see anything. I'm not sure what slide you're on.
I'm sorry, we're on the overview. Maybe you could, if you can't see it on the Zoom link?
I see it now.
Okay.
Every time I speak, it goes black. That's the problem. So overview page, just, you know, very, very broad look here. You know, goes over how we responded to the RFP, basic mission statement, and our commitment to the plan. So if we want to go to the next slide, slide two, the Business Plan Flight Deck Concept. So whole idea is this is, it's, we know in the past, Tom is, I've been there myself with Tom and Tom frequented the Flight Deck Barn Grill for some time. So he was saddened to see it go away. So really, we're committed to breathing some new life into it. We're planning a complete overhaul, a complete remodel. I have provided some, or we have provided some detailed documentation, 3D simulations, things of that nature that we'll go into that in more detail. As part of that process, we are intending to install two sports simulators. If we go to the next slide, which is the simulator details. The simulators are units from a company called Full Swing. They represent a leader in the indoor sim, sports simulator industry. Obviously flagship is golf, but these simulators do cover a wide range of gameplay. So you're not just limited to golf. Whole idea being is offering some sort of entertainment value for clients visiting the area, especially in winter season when, you know, sometimes outdoor sports are sought after, but not necessarily available. This kind of gives you a little more availability into that. Next slide, beverage plan. Obviously, we will be continuing to pursue a Type 47 license, general eating place, full menu. We're working currently with U.S. Foods to design our menu. As well as taking advantage of another food vendor in the area. Moving along to the next slide, implementation and cost schedule. So planning is well underway. As I mentioned before, we have full overviews of the proposed updates available. If you haven't already seen them, we're working with a local architect through Monarch Architecture. And I believe I mentioned, it is, it is going to be a complete overhaul. We're planning on updating the fixtures, making sure, we're working with the kitchen equipment and the latest code standards. Some, some new furniture, things of that nature. Overall estimated cost of the project is, is right around the $870,000 mark, which is outlined in the final slide of this presentation, financial projections. So kind of a short, sweet overview. Like I said, very broad look. So I just want to, want to be able to answer any questions that you might have regarding the project.
I think that concludes your overview of what we got going, John?
Yep.
All right. All right, well, great. With that, we will go ahead and bring it back to council for any clarifying questions. Anybody with clarifying questions? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and open this up for public comment. Yes, Mr. Lamalle.
Scott Lowberg, I just wondered if they resolved the signage issue? That there was an issue of not having signage before? Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you for the comments. Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll move to Zoom.
We'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on Agenda Item 24. No additional public comments, ma'am.
Great, we'll go ahead and bring that back to council. Mr. Dickinson, if you want to answer the question about the signs.
Yes, sir. On the signage, we working with dollar signs in the town right now. We've completed the final design and we have a PO for that right now. So it should be coming pretty quick.
Backlit or frontlit sign?
It's a frontlit sign.
Nice. Great. All right, thank you so much. With that, we will go ahead and, any clarifying questions or a motion?
I, I move to pass, I move to authorize and direct the mayor to execute the Airport Food and Beverage Lease and Concession Agreement with Flight Deck Grill and Golf Club LLC.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second and we can vote.
Sorry, I just had the page in front of me.
Thank you, because it wasn't on the screen.
And, I don't know, there it is.
Thank you, that motion carries.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to our final item of the day. This is number 25, extension to agreement with Axon for body worn cameras and in-car video systems. And this will be Mr. Robertson.
Ms. Blankenship, do you have Daniel on the horn?
Yes, I do.
Awesome. Mayor, council, I'm Jeff Robertson, I'm the Support Lieutenant here at the Police Department. I'm here to take, to talk about the renewal of our Axon Body Camera contract. And on the line with me is Daniel Burt. He is the Axon rep for our area. So in 2019, the council came to the Police Department, asked us to do a, a report on body worn cameras. And we came back in 2020 with that report and a recommendation to purchase the Axon Body Worn Camera System, which included the Axon in-car camera system. Kind of the purpose of that was for accountability and transparency in and for the community of the Police Department. So in that process, over the last four years, we've seen success in both areas, in transparency and accountability. That system's worked great for us. One of the comments that we got is that it's, it never goes down. We've seen success in criminal prosecution, making clear for the prosecutors, you know, which direction they're going to go with prosecution, making that camera footage viable for evidentiary, evidentiary footage. We've seen officer complaints come in and they've been, they've been cleared quickly because of the body camera footage. And we've also been able to provide agency training because of some of the things that have been captured on the, on the body camera footage. Ultimately, the body camera and in-car video have been integrated into like the daily processes at the Police Department, starting with the incident numbers being attached to the video for the incident. So the officers come back to the station, they don't have to sift through video from the entire day to find the incident that they have to categorize it for. That's automatic. You know, so most of our community, community interactions are recorded based on our pretty robust activation policy. So we have everything from traffic stops to prisoner transports to investigative interviews and, and evidence collection. In my conversation with the Police Officers Association, they recommend continuing the contract with Axon. So let's talk about what we got the first time. So our current equipment and our software, that's kind of the biggest component is the software. So our current equipment is a Body Camera 3. That, that current camera is one, is the one that, well, the other lieutenant's got it on his desk, but there is show and tell. A lot of people would think when we talk about the body camera process, that we're talking about two pieces of equipment. We're talking about a camera that you wear in uniform and you were talking about a camera that goes the front end of your car. It's, it's a lot more robust than that. Our initial purchase came with in-car videos, which included the forward facing cameras as well as the rear facing camera. That includes infrared for capturing whatever's going on in the backseat of the patrol car. We also got Axon Capture on our department cell phones in our first purchase. Axon Capture is our, it's our evidence recovery system. It's, it takes photos, takes videos, and it dumps them directly into Evidence.com, which is the biggest software platform that comes from the Axon, Axon system. We also got Axon Respond, which is a GPS enabled camera on a map. You can see your officers in the field, the location of their camera, and hopefully they're attached to them. And you can see whether they're activated or whether their, their camera's not activated. Going back to Evidence.com, that's, that's probably the biggest, the biggest portal that we have. That's where our evidence is categorized, cataloged, and stored. That portal is the thing that's familiar to most of our officers for. They're going to go through, they're going to take their daily evidence, they're going to drop that evidence into the case files, they're going to take their body camera, they're going to drop that into the case files, the case that's appropriate to that. As I mentioned before, our system auto tags the videos for the call for service. So we're getting that automatically in there. One of the significant things about Evidence.com is the audit trail. So the audit trail in Evidence.com, I'm sure you've seen body camera footage on, I don't know, Body Camera Live. You know, where you have the serial number of the body camera in the upper right-hand corner, you'll have the, you know, sometimes the officer ID, you'll have the date and timestamp for it. So that's the beginning of the audit trail. Back in Evidence.com, we're going to have an audit trail that says when that footage started, when that footage ended, who viewed the footage, who was it exported, you know, who was it delivered to? So that audit trail's pretty significant for us and for the viability of the chain of custody. And again, Evidence.com is our asset and program management software. It assigns cameras, it assigns tasers, it assigns the in-car videos to cars. It tells, it assigns authorities for who can view the in-car video, who can view the body camera footage. So Evidence.com is pretty significant to us as a, as the platform we're going to use in our daily processes. We also got a redaction software for PRA requests and for critical incident videos that we're going to put out. And that, while it was good at the time, there is better available now. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. In the infancy of this program, we had no idea what we were getting. We had no idea what, what quantity of video we were going to be taking. So our initial contract accounted for about 12 terabytes of storage. Right now, we're at about 22 terabytes of storage. So we're going to talk about storage in a hot minute, too. So let's talk about what's included in this, in the contract that's before you. I'm going to make a screaming sound. Maybe not, there we go. So in the original contract, so I'm going to talk about two contracts, the 2020 to 2025 contract, which is what we're in right now, and then the 2024 to 2029 contract, which is what we're recommending. So in that original contract, we had two equipment refreshes. One is for, we get one at midterm and we get one at the end. So we're going to have an equipment refresh going into the proposed new contract, upgrading to Axon Body 4s. The Body 4 cameras have improved sound, they have better camera quality and, and have better night vision capability than the Body Cameras 3s, Body Camera 3s. In the in-car videos, we're going to step up to a Fleet 3. Fleet 3 is another body, is the car camera. The Fleet 3 comes with integrated license plate readers. We've had, we have one license plate reader, a mobile license plate reader deployed. The integration's expensive and the equipment's expensive. This is going to allow us to integrate body, LPRs into the, the car camera. So the benefit of LPR in the car cameras is, you know, you get a car from either the federal wanted list or the state wanted list, NCIC or CGIS. It's going to, you know, if it's attached to a human trafficking case or it's attached to, you know, Amber Alert or a stolen car or something, it's going to pop up with that alert as officers driving around. We're going to continue to have Axon Capture where we, where we take our photos and our evidence and directly upload them to Evidence.com. I mentioned Axon Respond earlier. We're going to upgrade, we recommend upgrading to Axon Respond Plus. So not only does it allow the GPS location of the officer and whether the camera is activated or not, it will allow live streaming of that recording camera back to a command center for, for situational awareness, you know, critical incidents, you know, mass casualty incident, you know, a calder fire, you know, stuff like that. And then as we go into Evidence.com, there's the other thing that we're asking for and recommending in Evidence.com is upgraded redaction software. So now Axon offers an AI assisted redaction. So it automatically redacts faces, screens, and license plates, three of the most difficult things to move your, move your redaction square around on the screens. Right now, IT does our redaction, Evidence, our Evidence Division does redactions. It implicates stuff at the city attorney's office and, you know, to a lesser extent, the city clerk's office. So we're hoping that our recommendations follow to get the AI assisted redaction to, to make that process more efficient. We're also recommending that we go with Community Request. Community Request is a, is a public facing portal where we would put on social media, hey, this crime happened at this location at this date and this time. Did anybody happen to witness this or have any evidence that they could upload to our portal that we could use? The reason I bring this up is because we used to be able to reach out to Ring from Amazon and we'd go, hey, is there any, any of your users in this area that have any video footage of what we're looking for? In January of this year, Amazon decided they're not going to cooperate with law enforcement anymore, so we lost that resource. So we think this portal, along with the messaging on social media or even mainstream media, to get that out there, to put the ability of people in the public to upload evidence is pretty significant and will play into the efficiency of some of our investigations. Around town, there's about 1,000 different surveillance systems and each one of them takes their own proprietary software. Axon is offering a third-party video play. So as we upgrade the, or we upload all these videos from different surveillance systems, we have to get codecs and apps. And all these things that IT hates to bring on to our, hates to bring on to our servers to run these different videos. Axon provides this third-party video play, which would centralize the video playback for all these different platforms and diminish the vulnerability that IT sees in uploading all these apps and stuff. So let's talk about storage for a minute. I told you we are 10, 10 terabytes over our allotted 12 terabytes. We are recommending that we go with unlimited storage. And the reason, there are a couple of reasons that we want to go with unlimited storage. Every Every investigation that we do is usually tech-laden, and that tech is getting deeper and deeper. As an example, the, the fentanyl overdose from earlier this year, we downloaded five terabytes of data for that case, and those terabytes have to go someplace. With unlimited storage from Axon, we have a familiar platform, we have a platform with robust audit trail to say where that's, where that's been, where it's been viewed, what's, when it was booked in, stuff like that. Additionally, we have legacy video systems, we have Arbitrator, which was our old in-car camera system, and we have Verapic, which is our old digital evidence system. We would like to take both of those systems and not pay the licensing fee every year for these legacy systems, and, and if we can, put them into evidence.com with the unlimited So what's unique about Axon Body War Camera and In-Car Video, really a lot of the things that made Axon the primary, kind of the primary system that we went with in the, in 2020, have been replicated by their competitors, but there are still, there are still things that Axon does that nobody else does. One of those things is proximity activation. Other companies have figured out how to turn their body cameras on when the light bar goes on in the car. Axon is the only company that has your body camera turned on when your taser's active, when your taser is not just activated, but when it's taken off safe, like you deploy it. And Axon also provides the, you know, if you have a, a crash alert, your in-car video goes on, overhead light activation, your holster activation, there's a component that goes on your holster, when you draw your gun out of your holster, the body camera activates. Additionally, evidence.com is the standard portal in the county that we provide evidence to the DA's office for prosecution. We used to dump all our digital evidence onto a thumb drive or onto a CD-ROM or something like that, we'd take a physical copy of it and hand it off to the prosecutor. Now the prosecutor gets on evidence, their, their evidence.com portal, and we share, we share portions of our evidence to them for different cases. So there are a couple of things about Axon that are, that are kind of proprietary, evidence.com and that sharing is one of them, as well as the taser activation. So why buy now, you ask? So in 2024, 25, our contract expires in August, so I'm coming to you now to capitalize on what savings that we can do from purchasing this before the beginning of Axon's price increases on October 1st. Axon expects the price increase over the next year to be eight to 10%, so while I'm here today, I'm, I'm seeking authority to do a purchase in the next fiscal year for, to renew this contract.
Questions from council? I don't see any, I think, oh, yes, Ms. Wallace.
That's okay, I did it right as you were saying it. Is the upgrade to evidence.com included in the 980,000 and change?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, well, seeing none, I think we'll open it up to public comment. Thank you so much, Mr. Robson, appreciate that. Anybody in the room that would like to give a public comment on item number 25? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and move to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on Agenda Item 25. No public comments at this time, Mayor.
Great, so we'll go ahead and bring this back to council for any clarifying questions or a motion.
Thank you for that report. I just wanted to say, I hadn't ever thought, I mean, I've thought about all the ramifications of how this is used, but the thing that stuck out to me was how it can be used for training opportunities. I thought that was really cool and a really extra added kind of long-term benefit, that's not just about the case or the evidence itself, but that, I thought, was a really cool aspect, and I really support this, and I'm really happy that our Police Department uses this system.
Great, ditto. All right, unless there's any other, we'll look for a motion.
I move that we pass a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a five-year contract extension with Axon for body worn camera, in-car video systems with unlimited data storage, enhanced soft, support software, licenses, and no questions warranty for 980,976 and 45 cents, payable over five years of the contract, interest-free, and appropriating 195,986 from general fund undesignated excess reserves into fiscal year 2425 budget for the first annual payment.
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second and we can vote.
That motion carries, thank you.
All right, great, well, we will move on to our agenda planning calendar, this is item 26, and we will go ahead and open it up, Mr. Irvin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bass. The next meeting is September 24th, it's a night meeting, 5:30. And then, just a reminder, mark your calendar for October 15th, joint special meeting with the Eldorado County Board of Supervisors. More details to come on that specific time, but we're flushing those details out with the staff right now.
Great, all right, Mr. Blankenship, anything on APC from you?
No, Mayor.
All right, we will go ahead and move to council, Ms. Kriegen.
Thanks. When we were having the discussion regarding the annual report on homelessness and the financial situation in which Live Violence Free and the Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless find themselves, it seems to me that what Mr. Irvin was suggesting was that we could maybe have with those two organizations, between those and the city, we could have a contract for fee for services, because I think that we're not, well, I know that I'm not in a position of favoring, you know, giving them grants, as, as you said, we've, we've worked hard to figure out our, our grant funding for our community nonprofits, but paying them for the services that they do on behalf of the city seems like it might be an appropriate place, and so I would be in favor of city staff exploring that opportunity to create that kind of relationship with those nonprofits.
We will agendize that and bring back an item for council to discuss.
Great, thank you, Ms. Kriegen, Ms. Wallace.
I really don't have anything, I haven't had any board meetings, I'm trying to think if I've had any board meetings, I'm constantly in meetings, but we do have the 40th anniversary of the Conservancy next Thursday, the 20th, and maybe it's two Thursdays from now, I don't know. And if everybody, if anybody is interested, the, it will be held, I believe, in Kings Beach, but it's, it's a good organization, they are not perfect, but they are good, and they've done a great job protecting sensitive lands in the community and on the California side of the basin. Other than that, I don't really have anything, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wallace, Mr. Robbins.
Yesterday, I attended the TRPA's housing public meeting, there are inputs for changes to the TRPA zoning and regional regulations to encourage more housing affordability in the community. It was attended, it was at the Bijou Community School, there was maybe 30 to 40 community residents there, so it was moderately attended. They're doing another one today up on the North Shore, but I thought the, I thought the staff did an excellent job, the TRPA staff did an excellent job gathering community input for things that the TRPA can do to incentivize more housing in the community. In addition, separate from that, one of the things that I've been tracking with city staff for a while now has been the issue of cars that are parking in our bike routes. We have two different types of, of bike infrastructure, we have bike lanes in which cars are not allowed to park, and they're designated bike lanes, and that's different in California's laws from what's called a designated bike route. And along Lakeview Avenue, along Johnson Boulevard, along a number of our streets, we have bike routes, but cars are allowed to park in bike routes, and particularly in the busy summer season, we wind up, particularly on Lakeview Avenue, we have a lot of cars that are parked in the bike lanes, and so then the bikes are in the car lanes, and this is sort of the reverse of what we want. So I would like to agendize an item for staff to consider alternative arrangements for our bike routes to make them such that cars are not parking in our bike lanes, be that any appropriate movement of the lanes around, or movement of where park, you know, which side of the street parking on, I don't wanna be prescriptive in this agenda item, I want to bring back an item where we are looking at having bike lanes along our major streets that are not, in which we do not allow cars to park.
Yeah, I can support that, I just wanna put with one caveat, I know how full the plate is for public works right now, so as long as we make sure that we give them the time to kind of make it work within their workload and it doesn't overwhelm.
This is, this is not a today thing, you got, there's gonna be a whole winter of probably not much biking, so.
Great, yeah, I can support that, just with that little caveat, so that we're, we're not overloading the work. Great, is that all for you, Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Okay.
Joe, did that adequate? All right, good.
All right, awesome. For me on the APC, I really don't have anything today for that, so with that, we will go ahead and move on to updates and announcements, and I will start with Ms. Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any at this time.
Great, Mr. Irvin.
Yeah, I just wanna let everyone know that State of the College address is Thursday, I'll be attending, if anybody wants to go with me, let me know. I'll let you take the next one, the other state of, that's coming up, but then, this weekend, 11 o'clock to 3 o'clock, Bijou Community Park, multicultural celebration, that's all I have.
Great, Ms. Blankenship.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, first of all, I let Mr. Messina know that I would attempt to play his video for you, because the only way I can make it part of the public record is to actually play the video, because we don't have a way of capturing a video in a still, so, so I'm gonna attempt that now. I don't believe there's any sound, it's just some pictures regarding the trash cans. There's only about 20 seconds more. And I've also passed that along to Sarah Letton, our Sustainability Coordinator, who coordinates with South Tahoe Refuge, just for reference. And the other thing I have for you is a proclamation request for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, if I can bring that back, great. And then last piece of information is just to let the public know that we are soliciting applications for a city council appointment due to the vacancies, vacancy of former Mayor Pro Tem Friedrich, and applications are available in our lobby or on the city's website. So, and the last day to turn those in is September 18th at 4:00 PM.
Great, thank you, Ms. Blankenship. All right, so with that, we will go ahead and move on to council member reports and comments, and we will start with Ms. Kriegen.
Don't really have anything, I went to the Ski Run Park ribbon-cutting, though I was late and missed the giant scissors, and it was such a, it was such a great event, people are really, really excited about that park.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wallace.
I got confused and gave you my report already.
All right, nice.
I'm done, I don't have anything. I also went to the Ski Run Park and so excited, we need pocket parks in every neighborhood.
Very cool, all right, Mr. Robbins.
I also did this out of order, just like, but I also went to the Ski Run, I forgot to mention, I also did go to the Ski Run Park, and I will only add to the official record that I was, having gotten there up close rather than seeing it driving by, I was impressed at just how tall those climbing rope, jungle gym rope things, I don't know what they're called exactly, they're, they're tall, they're up there, they're quite high, and I was pretty impressed by that, I didn't think we made parks like that anymore, and I was really glad to see that. I'll also mention that I have been in conversations with Anush and Joe on developing parklets, so turning some of our spaces that we're using as drainage retention ponds, where the land is only partially, where you have a number of parcels where half the parcel is a retention pond and the other half is just level ground, and possibly turning those into what are called parklets, like little micro parks, because there's a number of those plots that are distributed throughout the community, and I don't, I don't know if, I, I, I'm sure there is more work available to do on this and every other topic than there are people to go around, but looking at opportunities for using the land we already have, especially empty land to make little corners of the community better, and Ski Run, the Ski Run Park was a, was a good example of that having come to fruition.
Great, well, thank you, Mr. Robbins. For me, I, the only report I have is that next September, excuse me, next Tuesday to September the 17th at 5:30 PM, we will be doing the State of the City, it's at the Beach Retreat in Conference Center and open to everybody, so please join us next Tuesday. And with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
We don't, we don't need a motion to adjourn. You just adjourned.
Perfect, we are adjourned, thank you so much.